Condo, condo Demetraiki?
Present.
Fox?
Here.
Hicks?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Rosenberg?
Here.
Savage?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Woodfin.
Here. All right, with a quorum, we will open the meeting. Our first item on the agenda is to prove the minutes from the prior meeting, that was the June 18th Planning Board meeting. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Quick agenda overview for anyone here regarding item 8A, an amendment request for 11 Stickney Avenue, item 9A, 391 Loudon Road, and item 9B, 313 Loudon Road. Those applications have all been requested to be moved to the August 21st meeting of the Planning Board. So would someone like to make a motion to?
Clarification. 391 Loudon Road requested to continue to September.
391 Loudon Road continued to September. So should we do those as a separate?
Yeah.
Motion? Okay, so item 8A and item 9B, would someone like to make a motion to move those items to August 21st meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And the item 9A on the agenda, 391 Loudon Road, that applicant has requested that the application be pushed off until the September meeting. Someone like to make a motion to push that to the September, I don't know the date, 18th Planning Board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So again, 8A, 9A, 9B will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for those, you can head on out. But we'd love to have you stay and listen to the rest of the meeting. So let's move on. Item five in our agenda is design review applications by consent. Consent agenda items in the audience, if you have any concerns regarding items 5A through 5I, with the exception of 5C, which has been pulled out here, just please make yourself known and we will pull those items out. Any member of the board have any questions or concerns about any of these applications? So we will take those by consent. Would someone like to make a motion to approve items 5A, 5B, 5D, 5E, 5F, 5G, 5H, and 5I by consent with architectural design review recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. At the applicant's request, item 5C was pulled off for a public hearing. So if the applicant can make their way up and if we could read that into the record?
All right. Kevin Rutter, on behalf of the Smoking Turtle, requests architectural design review approval for a new 24-square-foot externally illuminated wall sign at 9 Pleasant Street Extension in the Central Business Performance District.
Yes, hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Welcome back.
Thanks.
Okay, tell us what you've got going on.
I followed the recommendation from the Architectural Board, came out with a new design, and just wanted to get approval on the new design.
Okay. So it's in there in our application. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or any concerns or issues with the sign? Matt loves it.
I love it.
He loved it before.
I did.
All right.
I move approval.
We've got a motion to approve, a second?
Can I?
Yes.
I would just like to clarify, the applicant not on the agenda packets that you're approving but had provided a resubmission addressing ADR's comments. I want to be clear, if you are approving what is on the agenda packet or what was provided by the applicant?
Approving what's in the agenda packet. Is it any different?
Yes.
That one?
I was, the Architectural Design requested that I remove the name on the bottom, so that's the only difference.
Oh, that one, okay.
That's what they sent us.
Right, yes.
Somebody sent me that.
Yes.
It was in an email. Right.
Okay. Now change your motion?
Yep.
Do we get a second?
I second.
Dean has seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set?
Great, thank you.
Good luck. Okay. And thank you for going through the process.
No problem.
All right.
I'm on Concorde TV right now, excuse me.
Doing a bang-up job, Beth.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks for being here. All right. Item six on the agenda, could we read that into the record? Extension applications by consent.
Eric Jones, on behalf of Kalapa Realty Trust, requests approval for a one-year extension of the major site plan approval for 21-unit elderly multifamily residential development at 61 Borough Road in the medium-density residential district and the single-family residential district.
Just for the record, I like the name, Club 55.
Mm-hmm.
Very nice. Any questions or comments regarding this extension request? If not, we'll take an app-- do we need to do anything else? We're in a public hearing?
Yep.
Would someone like to make a motion to grant that extension request as outlined?
So moved.
I hear it. So moved. Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to the agenda, the end of the consent agenda items and to our public hearing section. Let's move right into item 7A, if we could read that into the record.
Expose signs, on behalf of the John Flatley Company, requests architectural design review approval for a new 200-square-foot internally illuminated pylon sign at 10 Ferry Street in the Opportunity Corridor Performance District.
All right, let's get a little update on this if we can.
Okay. If the board recalls, this was on the consent agenda at the last meeting and Member Santa Cruz pulled it. He had a question about permitting requirement perhaps from New Hampshire Department of Transportation. That was relayed to the applicant. The applicant sent an email this morning at 9:00, 9:00 a.m., and I believe I forwarded it to the board.
You did.
So he consulted with the Department of Transportation in their frequently asked questions about installing a sign for my business on my property. Is a permit necessary? And the answer is, you may need one if you want to advertise any business other than yours that is located on the same parcel. And in this case, all of the businesses advertising on the sign are located on the parcel. So the answer to Member Santa Cruz's question is no. There's not a permit needed.
Counsel Pierce.
Uh.
Member Pierce, sorry.
Member Pierce, yeah.
Sorry.
Former counselor.
Of course I have it. Sorry, Brett.
No offense taken.
When I read the letter from DOT, was that according to DOT's rules in procedures? Or do they align with what the city says as whether or not that sign can be there? Because it's kind of big and is, do we have anything in ordinances advertising your own or is that just from the DOT?
Well, that is, the information that I just said is specifically from DOT.
I went back and looked at it and I think the DOT piece, and I don't want to speak knowledgefully about it, but I think that was more like billboard signs and people putting signs up that-
Right.
-for another property or something like that. For this type of property, it didn't have an issue and our normal ordinances would be in charge of how big it is and, you know, internally illuminated and all that. I think that that piece of it was, it's right there next to the on-ramp. It's right, right next to the highway. And when I was reading through the FAQs, I think that was the intent of the FAQ was for something like a billboard or something to advertise something that wasn't a business that was there.
Okay.
May be wrong, but.
And there were a couple of items that the sign was not in compliance with our zoning ordinance, but they requested variances from the zoning board of adjustment and those were approved. For size, I believe height setback, and the number of freestanding signs on one parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Todd.
Thank you. I'm following up on Mr. Pierce's comments here. I think when I, when I read the, what was sent to us, which is the description, well, it's the actual verbatim, it's what's on the DOT's frequently asked questions. And the question is, I want to install a sign for my business on my property. Do I need a permit? And the answer is, you may need one if you want to advertise any business other than yours that is located on the same parcel. I don't, so other than yours, meaning, I take it to mean that there's an ownership issue here. So in other words, is it in fact the case that Flatley or this facility owns these businesses that they're advertising?
That I don't know. That's, I guess you could determine it that way. I think Jeff, when, Remember Santa Cruz had asked about this, it was from the DOT's perspective since it was so close to the, to the DOT property or the DOT property, even though it resides on their property, did they have concerns about, about it from that perspective?
Right.
That's why we pulled it last time.
Right. And, and I, I think that what I'm seeing here doesn't really, to me, there's still a question.
Okay.
It's, it's the language that the DOT has here. It seems to suggest that, let's say, for example, if you, you know, if you had a whatever business, well, let's go across the street. Kimball Jenkins.
Yep.
They own property that really, that directly abuts there. So if, I think theoretically, if they want to put up some kind of a sign, they could probably do so without DOT approval.
Absolutely.
Because they own the property and, and that's-
Right.
But there's that question of ownership and I'm not sure exactly what the definition is of that. So I'm still confused about this a little bit in terms of the DOT's part.
If, if I may?
Yeah.
Just to add to Counselor Todd's question, that, this is the Concord Center. They lease out space. They have storage lockers. Town Fair Tire has a tire warehouse place where they store tires. There are a number of businesses that are in the Concord Center. So I'm, to Counselor Todd's point, I too am confused as to whether or not, all the businesses there are not owned by Flatley. They own the building and rent out space. So I'm not sure what DOT says aligns with our ordinances, but you say that zoning gave them a variance.
Zoning gave them a variance for the items from whatever were necessary for compliance with our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance doesn't have anything specific-
Okay.
-about this.
I don't know that there's an issue. What?
I'm confused too.
Yeah, okay.
It seems to me, and I was a little confused with what you said. So did this come from, did the answer come from the frequently asked questions at DOT?
Yes.
So nobody's asked DOT?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's a very good question.
I would really suggest that somebody-
Mr. Walker told me that he spoke with them on the phone and I said I would prefer something in writing from them.
Yeah.
And this is what he sent. So.
I would be more comfortable with, with, with somebody asking DOT and getting it and writing from DOT.
I would to deny in the, in the offing.
I would too.
Go that way.
Okay.
If someone would like to make a motion to deny the applicant with the direction back to staff for DOT feedback from a DOT person, is that, would that suffice?
I'll, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Yes, and I, I'll second. And I think it, I agree with what Ms. Skinner said, that it should be something in writing that we can actually have as part of the record.
Okay. And again, just for clarity, just so we don't have to go back again, the, the question is, can this, can this sign appear in proximity to the road that DOT is, owns and operates, even though the property, even though it's on private property? Right? So we got a motion?
And it's advertising businesses other than John Flatley's?
Well, it's, I mean, but everybody does that.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody that owns the business is the one who puts in the sign application and then the people that are renting the space from them are the ones who put the signs up. So-
This is not-
Company A, it's no different than all the pylon signs all the way up and down the city. So.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'd love your input, Mr. Walsh.
Would it be, if, if the board has a question about if DOT approval is required, would it be more, would it be more appropriate to table the application until we get the answer from DOT and then make a decision?
Is there an opportunity to, to approve the application for the design and look and feel with the understanding that staff gets a feedback from the, from the department?
As a condition?
Is there any tolerance for that or no?
I only suggest that. If I may, if, if DOT takes longer than our, than our deadline of a month, they take two months, then, then I'd hate for that. And then they do say it's okay that the applicant would be under, you know, who knows how long DOT could take to get it?
Conditionally approve what's in our purview, which is the look, the feel, understanding that the zoning variance is there for the height and the second sign or third sign on the property. With those, with that in mind, are there concern issues with the look and feel of the sign or the design? I don't think there are. It's truly the answer to the question about DOT. Would we feel comfortable, provided staff gets feedback that, from DOT that says there's no issue, we don't regulate that, or whatever they come back and say, would we feel comfortable doing that in advance?
With written, yes.
Written approval back from?
We did have some comments on the look and feel, I believe.
Yeah, from?
So just to make sure that that's not ignored in the approval process from last month's comments.
With the design review, look and feel. Is there a comfort level there, Counsel Todd?
Yep.
Are we okay procedurally? I think so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second. Procedurally, do we take that off the table? Can we pull back the motion in a second?
I would just go back to Mr. Walsh's comment on tabling it as opposed to denying it. So.
But tabling it requires to come back next month for approval. I was trying to circumvent that.
Yes, no, that makes sense. Yeah. I'd like to see them get relief on this, but I want to do it the right way.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would suggest removing the, the motion to deny it, but then to say with the condition, with the ADR comments-
Making a motion to approve, second, with the understanding.
With the understanding that no sign permit is issued until they have written consent from, or approval from DOT. That is not violating any sign regulations for them.
And I think-
Teresa, I think, made the-
Yeah.
Made the motion, so.
So she would have to withdraw.
She would have to withdraw and if you don't want it, that's fine.
Well, I'm totally confused. You want me to withdraw and then start over again?
Yes, procedurally, yep.
I'll withdraw, my second.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the sign as submitted with architectural design review. Comments contingent on feedback from the Department of, the Department of Transportation in writing back to staff outlining the concerns that we've addressed here. Is that broad enough but not too nichey?
Yeah, it doesn't give a deadline, but it-
It paints us in a corner.
Yeah, I can't give them a deadline because I don't want to do that. So. All right, so a motion's been made.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I think that's a good solution. All right, let's move on. 9A again was pulled, I believe. No, yeah, 9A was, is off the agenda until, 9A and 9B is off the agenda until the August and September meeting. So let's move right on to-
7B.
Oh, sorry, am I going too far ahead of myself?
7B.
7B. Neopco Signs, how could I forget that? Let's read 7B into the record if we could.
Okay. Neopco Signs, on behalf, behalf of Seth Hippel, requests architectural design review approval for a new 28-square-foot internally illuminated freestanding sign at 390 Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District.
All right, welcome to the table, Mr. Shadlik. If you could state your name for the record?
Glenn Shadlik, Neopco Signs.
All right, tell us what we're, what the-
Well, before I get into a discussion with everybody on the board, I'm wondering if anybody would entertain passing the sign as submitted without the Design Review Board's recommendations?
Okay, let's get the recommendations on, on the, on the record here. What were the recommendations from Architectural Design Review to your application?
They said that they thought because of section 5A B, which is in the Architectural Design Review Board guidelines, section B coincidentally is titled materials, which is not what they had concerns about, but it does say under B materials, that sign materials should harmonize with a building's design. It continues to say, a simple and direct message and with upper and lowercase letters is most effective. Nowhere in that section 5.4B does it say that you can limit content of the sign or colors, which as we all know, and I think the city solicitor has told the boards, you cannot limit colors and content on a sign. So their point is moot, in my opinion, because they had a problem with the content on the sign. And if you were to go back to the beginning of it where it says materials, it does not say that it shall be simple. It said it should. So again, it's a suggestion. Same thing I've been coming before the board for, for the last three or four meetings.
Why are there two URLs listed?
So what was another coincidentally funny thing was, the minutes were edited and a lot of my explanation on why they wanted it did not get into the minutes. So I don't think you were able to, to view it. They said that the two taglines were a lot of copy on the sign and their main concern was driving by at 30 miles an hour, you wouldn't be able to read the two taglines. My response to that was, what they don't understand is right next door, there is a large property for sale, the old Loudon Road Restaurant, and that's come before some of the boards for redevelopment, I think most recently for a transmission shop. So there'd be a parking lot right next to the sign and next to this building. So people will be able to sit in the parking lot and read that content. So again, their point was moot and that was not added into the minutes for you to see.
Okay. And the blue, just visual question and I'm just asking about the blue around the street number at the bottom, is that because there's blue in the logo at the top?
Yes, yes, we tried to tie it in. Yep.
Okay, tell them that.
And the board was very favorable of the, of the design until they started talking about the, the web address.
Yeah, which we know we don't want to talk about. Counsel, Member Pierce.
In, in reading the minutes, yeah, just there, yeah. In the minutes, it, Mr. Hippel asked if, if it would be helpful if there was just one URL and he agreed.
He said that he would agree to it if that was, not knowing that you cannot limit the content on the sign, which I informed him when I first met with him because he wanted a phone number on the sign. And I said, look, the board is not in favor of a sign that is cluttered. If you put a phone number on there, then you're, you're really asking for a lot of pushback. So let's move on to what's important to you. And these two URLs were both important. And one of the members of the Design Review Board actually pulled up some of the websites for the signs for the, for law firms and those came up quick because of the URLs that they have.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would you like me to read the ADR recommendation?
That's fine. That's fine. Is there anything different?
No, I just thought it would be if you wanted to hear that and the second 5.4, just from-
No, that's okay. Unless there's something substantially different. Any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Excuse me, about this application? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank Glenn for your testimony, comments, questions, concerns. Do we have- Do we have, uh, issues regarding, regarding the sign? I, I, I think it's a beautiful looking sign and don't have a problem with the content, the look and feel. I'll make a motion to approve it as submitted with the visuals, with no changes. Any other Architectural Design Review changes that need to be noted that you are going to make or no?
No, everything.
So the visual that we're seeing is what you want to approve? I'll make a motion and we approve it as it's outlined. We've got a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you all.
Thanks for doing good work, Glenn. All right, let's move on on our agenda. We won't skip past eight A, let's read that into the record if we could.
Eight A was continued.
We do want to skip past eight.
August 1st.
Almost, almost got it. All right. And I say nine A, you're gonna say nine A was continued.
Nine A was continued to September 18.
Nine B was continued.
Continued to August 21st.
Uh, let's move on to item nine C if we could.
Okay.
Read that into the record.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of Thomas and Allison Cooper, requests approval for a minor subdivision application and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations to divide one existing lot into two lots at 61 Mountain Road, and I see that I left out the I in Mountain, in the single-family residential district.
Sorry, you're gonna come back next month?
Yeah.
All right, uh, let's get a quick staff update on this while the applicant.
Would you like to make a determination of completeness?
Uh, we, we would love to make a determination of completeness. Is that on my little list of things to do and I missed it?
Hopefully it is, but.
Motion second, oh no, it's not, nine C. Look at that.
There it is.
Motion.
Determined.
All right, we've got determination completeness component from this application. Staff has reviewed the application, found it complete and recommended open a public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open a public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing is open. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Well, good evening, my name's Mark Sargent and I'm with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates and I'm here tonight representing the Cooper family. Uh, the property before the board this evening is at 61 Mountain Road, has a total area, and I wish I could make that bigger, I'm not computer savvy, but, um, has a total area of 15.24 acres with 255 feet of frontage on Mountain Road. There is a single-family home on the property, um, and the, the property backs up all the way to Interstate 93 and stretches quite a bit north. I don't know if they.
You want smaller?
Just trying to make it fit so you can see it. There you go, thanks, man.
You're welcome.
Um, and a, a portion of the discontinued Old Lock Road makes up the, the subtly boundary of, of this property. So the subdivision before the board this evening is to create one additional lot and that lot would have 2.61 acres, 100 feet of frontage on Mountain Road. Access to the property would be via an easement running along the path of Old Lock Road. Uh, the parcel meets the requirements for both usable and buildable areas and they intend to, uh, put another single-family home on, on that, on this parcel. Uh, the remaining parcel with the single-family home that exists today would be 12.62 acres with 155 feet of frontage. We did request two waivers and they were the section 15.03 parentheses four, which is topography, and sections 15.01 parentheses three, which is wetlands. As you can see on the plan, the most gnarly portion of the parcel, we didn't do top or wetlands on because there really is nothing they can, can do on it. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, questions from the board? Matt?
So, my question is, I heard you say that access to the lot is going to be from Old Lock Road, so there won't be a driveway in front of that parcel on Mount Road?
There will be, Matt. Um, if I can try to point right down here on Mountain Road, that's where the Old Lock Road intersected with Mount Road. So we're gonna come down that old, uh, block road, kind of swing around and, and intersect that parcel here.
That will be the access to it?
That would be the access to it.
Interesting, okay, thank you.
Does that say it was discontinued in June of 1959, Old Lock Road?
Yeah. We still call it Old Lock Road.
Okay, other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Okay, Mark, we'll have you hop back if you could. Hi there, welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
My name is Lisa Denningham.
Okay, Lisa, are you in a butter?
I am, I live at one Topath Lane.
Okay.
Very first lot there. Before the applicant moved to this home, um, it was owned by Dr. Winterlingan's wife and during the time that they, before they sold it and before we even moved to Topath Lane in 2006, he had, um, I don't know what the arrangement was, but the, um, line of the property that he owned, he, I thi, I think he gifted it to the abutters to, so that no one could, um, make a driveway there or a road specifically. My concern is, um, right after Mr. Cooper moved in, leveled all 15 acres of the trees in this area, um, he put up a sign that said, "Building lots for sale." And my concern is, um, one is that there not be a road so that I'm not hemmed in on three sides of my property. So, I just wanted to come in front of the board and let you know that the, the dot there that it sho, excuse me, that it shows on this property line is not the first one, but the second one. They have both dots in there, but they seem to have.
What dots, what?
On.
So are we looking at your, at your property?
Right, that corner right there.
Front corner, top corner, bottom corner?
Uh, closest to the.
Topath Lane or the other one?
Other one, the other end. This doesn't appear to be the right spot for the property line, because there's another prop, there's another dot if you follow up Mountain Road and there's another dot right up there, that is the property line. And so, when they did the, the measurement, it looks like they've used the lo, the wrong, the wrong property line. I don't know if you.
Which is up, are those what you're talking about?
No, on my property, up here, up for the.
Up, up.
Here.
Now zoom in.
See this one and then that one, those two, there are two.
So you're saying that the property line should be the one that's the bottom one?
Yeah. And my concern is that this will not just be a driveway, but it will be, end up being a road and that, that's my concern.
Okay. Okay, we'll get some clarification for you on that. Did I see other hands? Yes, sir. We have you, hang on just a sec, just, hang on just a second. I'm gonna have you sit over here. Thank you. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Donald Gott, five Topath Lane.
Okay. And you are in a butter as well, I believe, right?
I am, yes.
Okay.
My concern is that they're subdividing off a piece of property adjacent to mine. The applicant, a few weeks ago, did a patio in his yard and the contractor that he had dumped the excess material on his property and then pushed it onto mine, burying some trees I had planted two years ago to kind of block off because he cut all the trees on his property and I was just planting some little trees and they buried them. I talked to him, I talked to the contractor that did it, it's been a month, nothing's happened. I'm not able to get out of there very well, I've had three surgeries in the past month, so I'm not getting around very well. And I'm just concerned that this is not going to be his property anymore.
Okay.
And this hasn't been cleaned up.
Okay. We'll see if we can get some clarification for you, any recommendation from staff who they've talked to at the city regarding that? I don't know if it's code?
Probably the shit bit of silk fence, part, at the property line when the job was done.
Okay.
If there's any municipal remedy, which I'm not saying there is, um, I would recommend talking to the code office, David Hall's the code administrator. I suspect it's likely going to be a civil issue, but.
Yeah.
You can have a conversation with Mr. Hall.
Okay, did you get that, Mr. Gott?
No.
David Hall at the code enforcement office here in the city, just call tomorrow and ask to speak to Mr. Hall, JLL, in the code enforcement. He'd, he'd be able to at least point in the right direction. As, as Mr. Walsh says, more than likely it's a civil issue at this point, but he'd be able to at least give you a little advice.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions or concerns about this application? Yes, sir, come on up. Welcome to the table, if you could state your name for the record.
Okay, Greg Graves, 55 Mountain Road, uh, I'm in a butter.
Okay, and you're on the butter on the s.
On the south side.
South side?
And I've owned the property since 2002.
Okay.
So I'm pretty familiar with that property and I'm also, um, obviously pretty familiar with the property that's being discussed.
Okay.
Give me just a moment here. So, this property, um, if, I'll just do a general summation, if it could be subdivided easily, it probably already would have been. Chuck and Ann Winterling had it for 38 years. When he sold, he was interested in subdividing it and he's, obviously Chuck and I discussed it a lot, which way you would do it, how you would do it. Um, he had several contractors in there to see, they, uh, discussed it with me as well, what, what we would do. I have a lot of real estate myself in, in other places and, um, luckily Chuck sold it to somebody that bought the property in its entirety and that's, that's kind of how it's been. And that person, uh, sold it to the current owner and the current owner obviously wants to subdivide it, but this is not an easy project to, to subdivide, um, so obviously he's gonna get feedback in here, um, for, for due reason. And, uh, there's several factors that go along with this property. Um, one is it's on a bluff, so it's got a big drop off as it goes down to the back. Um, if the, either, either, the way I'm looking at the drawing, it seems like the, right now, that the driveway or the road would be on the north side of the house, but I know having spoken with Tom, um, in the past, and again, there was the big sign that was out there, lots for sale, and he offered to buy mine so that he could subdivide my property as well. I have, uh, nine and a half acres next to him, a lot, joining in the back a lot. And, um, and, and so basically we've got, you've got a big grade, if you want to head into Mountain Road on the level, um, you've got to come back on the level for a bit and then you've got to pitch it down. The property itself is right as you exit from Concord, it's on the interstate, um, it's on a bad part of the interstate, it's not just an interstate. It's the interstate part where the traffic is accelerating as it leaves town and it's also all the trucks are slowing down as they come into town. There's an acceleration lane, uh, leaving Exit 16, um, so you've got a lot of stream and engines one way or the other. So, developing it, it's not prime real estate to develop in the end is, is the issue. So, um, my wife Kim's here as well, she may want to speak, I don't know, um, and the Winterlings and, and I think there's also another New Hampshire State Forest that's just north of that, so there's like a 50-acre, uh, portion of forest or open land, you know, people walk across the property, enjoy the nature, up and down they go. Um, so this kind of cuts down in the middle of it. If there's gonna be a big fancy house built there, um, which is what I was told, um, that's nice, but I think people with big fancy money are not gonna want to have to have a big fancy house right next to the interstate, that's, that's where it's, it would be located. It's up to them, but it does put a cap on what you would build there, there's, there's an upper scene. Um, so the reason we have this meeting is for me, right? It's all, it's for me, I'm your butter and the reason is, is so that my property isn't grossly negatively affected by what goes on to my neighbor. What he does, I really don't care as long as, um, I come out okay. So, my concerns are, if you look, if the road is on the south side of that house, um, there's the old lock road, most of that road is mine, but there is a ditch on the north side and there is a spring there. And so I would, uh, be very concerned if we don't leave a five-foot setback at least for a ditch. I've had, uh, friends of mine that have bought property and then somebody changed the grade on theirs and their property became a stream bed and I don't want to become the stream bed from that, that spring. So, when that spring leaves, it's gotta go down there and it's gotta stay in the ditch and it should not be on my side because my side has the, the original lock, I have access to my property going down that road. The, and then again, we've got the, the grade and you've got the, the interstate right there. If there is a grade going down that bluff, if there's a driveway, um, and it has to be filled, and it might have to be filled five, 10, 15 feet, I was just there, half hour ago looking it over again, um, that means at a 45-degree pitch back, um, you're gonna have to move the driveway back 15 feet for every 15 feet you go up. And you add on a five-foot ditch, you're at 20 feet and you haven't even started the driveway. Um, if there's further lots as he had advertised and that road does go down along the edge of mine, that is an 800-foot long property line. That means if it's a 10-foot wide driveway and there's more than one house, I don't know who's gonna go halfway down that driveway and then have to back all the way back up. So it, that kind of presents that it needs to be two lanes, you need to have some way to get traffic both directions. So if that goes, where I'm looking at is it gets up to about 45, 50 feet if you have to fill and you have to have a decent, uh, driveway. So I guess the summation, the title of my speech is, we're not just talking about a driveway, we're talking about a street. And that's what we need to, you know, we don't want to overlook that, but if a driveway goes in there and there's further lot development up above, um, the, the grade, the road bed is probably gonna consume a 25-foot setback between the ditch and any grading and then you've got to throw a 20-foot road on there and maybe a five-foot setback on the other side, so you're talking 50 feet, so.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Graves? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
If you could just sign in there on the list.
I did.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments, concerns about this application? No, would the applicant come on back up?
Chair.
Yes.
Well, the applicant's coming up, uh, just, there seemed to be some concern about this driveway for one house turning into a road for more, more eventual lots and I just wanted to remind the board that there are different requirements for a single-family residential driveway versus more than one lot.
Versus four.
Yep.
Yep.
And, and it likely would not meet those requirements.
So just clarification wise for the applicants, uh, so, so, sorry, for the folks that gave some testimony, if, if there's a, an approval given for a single-family lot, it's based on a driveway requirement. Putting in second, third, fourth units transfers that to street requirements and those are much different and, and, and much different requirements that would need to be made, so. Welcome back again for the record, Mark Sargent, uh, from.
Richard Bartlett.
Richard Bartlett Associates, thank you. So you heard some public testimony?
I did.
Can you offer some clarification to us?
Sure.
And again, I, you know, folks looking at the screen, I don't know if you can see the screen there, or, yeah, I guess the whole thing is on the screen, so.
Yeah.
Just orient everybody, if you could, just quickly, the Topath Lane's at the top,
Right.
Some of the abutters are there, the green space that's in the middle on my screen here anyways, on my sheet, uh, the green hatching that's there, the trees that are there, is, uh, one of the, people had a question regarding her property line.
Yeah.
Coming down to that second post, you're a surveyor or your, your piece of it is certainly involved in looking at the property in its entirety and based on the records that you've found, is, is. in its entirety, and based on the records that you've found, is the property being displayed to us correctly?
I assure you it is.
Okay.
All right. I've been doing this for 40-plus years. So the bound, and I didn't catch the first woman's name.
Lisa Denny, Denningham?
Denningham.
Denningham, okay. The bound that she's looking at is a city street line bound, so it marks an angle point in the street line. If you look at our plan, there's certainly, there's other bounds in there, and I think Dick Bartlett actually did the original towpath lane subdivision back in the '70s. So we're very familiar with the property.
So the boundary mark that she was seeing as that second line is a street boundary line where the street starts to change in...
There's a deflection point right there.
Deflection.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Exactly. So, you know, I stand by the boundary that we have shown here.
Okay. And the space that's in the middle there, between the existing house and the top properties, is part of your parcel?
It is. Yeah. That's going to be part of the new parcel that is being created.
Okay.
The frontage for that parcel that's being created is north of the house lot.
Yep.
The access would be down Old Lock Road.
So at the bottom of the, at the very bottom of the screen, where you can hardly see it, is where you're talking about the driveway.
That's correct.
Is going to access the back lot.
Yeah. Yeah. Come down along that suddenly property line, along the old lock road.
Turn right.
Turn right and go into the parcel.
Go into the new property.
Yeah.
So the gentleman who gave some testimony regarding the length of that, 800 feet, is that about right?
It's about, probably about right, yeah.
So do we get into any 1,000-foot issues?
No. We had actually, you know, we presented this plan at a development, team development meeting several times. And I can tell you, my client initially came to me, he wanted to develop this property more than what we're proposing right now. And you can see, it's, you know, it's a long piece of property, stretches quite a bit back along behind Towpath Lane and along I-93. You know, there's some wetlands associated with it. So our recommendation to my client was, you can't do that. You know, there's no way to loop the road back to Mountain Road to make it less than 1,000 feet. You know, really, the only thing you could do with this particular piece of property is create one additional lot.
And again, for the record, 1,000 feet is important for life safety, fire, turnarounds, all of that. So there's a trigger point, again, for the folks who gave testimony, there's a trigger point, and our ordinance is at a 1,000-foot-long driveway, then it becomes a life safety issue with a fire truck turning around. But 800 feet and a turn, is there any space in the top of that turn for someone to turn around if they get in the wrong, in the wrong direction or somehow end up on that driveway? There's no question?
Well, I don't know why they would go down there to begin with. So no. I can't...
Okay.
And we're not talking about, you know...
It's a driveway.
Yeah, it's a driveway right now. You know, the talk about, you know, it's 50-foot wide, access, you know, it's just...
Turnarounds, hammerheads.
We don't need that.
Okay.
You know, it's a single-family, proposed for a single-family lot.
Okay.
And a driveway. So, and you know, the comment that made that most of Lock Road is on Mr. Graves' property is incorrect too, because Lock Road was discontinued, so half the right-of-way goes to the Cooper property, half the right-of-way goes to the Graves' property, and that's the way this plan is reflected. So, you know, the path, the original path kind of meanders along there, because there isn't much of a path left. We are currently having the driveway designed by an engineer. We'll provide that information to Peter once we have it, but we don't have it as of yet.
Okay. Okay.
Just real quick, there's, this has no bearing on the fact that there was a road there at one time. In other words, they can't regurgitate that former road.
No, that's why I made a point of mentioning it was discontinued, what, in the '50s?
'59.
'59, yeah.
And that's not our intent at all. The intent is just to create one additional lot. And as Ann Marie pointed out, if we're going to do something greater than this, if my client decides he wants to put a road there and do something different, he's going to come back before this word. Right now, all we're proposing is a single-family lot.
That's a pretty good...
Well, I just, I was just wondering, because it was a road at one time.
Yeah, yeah.
Does it have bear, any bearing on what's going on?
Again, if you heard Mr. Sargent, you know, when they do discontinue them like that, the road reverts to the butters.
To the center line, yeah.
And the center line then becomes your new property line, and the butter owns half and they own half, so...
Thank you.
That should quell the issues of drainage and culverts. I don't know, maybe it won't, but...
You know, it's going to be a typical driveway.
Okay.
And obviously, you know, there's slopes associated with it. It's not, it's not an easy place to access, put it that way. I'm the first one to admit it. And that's why we have an engineer designing a driveway right now.
Okay.
So, but as it pertains to further development on this property, you can see, I mean, there's a lot of wetlands, there's a lot of slopes.
Are there any, you looking for any variances on sightlines or turning onto Mountain Road as far as the distances? They all, they're all okay as far as distance from others?
Distance-wise, we're good. The only waivers that we're looking for were for the topography and the wetlands on that northern portion of the property.
Okay.
Thank you. Going back to the center line of Lock, Old Lock Road, if the city abandoned that road, then as you said, the center line, the right-of-way goes away, correct?
That, well, that's true, yeah.
All right. So now, if the right-of-way goes away, where would this driveway be?
Well, that's why we're creating an additional easement to put within that.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. Thank you.
Deanna.
Thank you. Could you help me understand where the new home would be placed? Would it be east of the drop-off or west of the drop-off?
If you look on the plan, we've got like a red square on there that says the usable area.
So it's west, so west of the drop-off, closer to 93?
Yes.
Yes, closest to 93.
Right back in the corner.
They would be overlooking 93.
Right, right there.
See?
Sorry. Right in that area, right there.
Okay.
And, you know, you can see the kind of, the cyan line, this dash, that's all the buildable area, so, you know, within the setbacks of, you know, for the buffer and the property line setbacks, so. So, you know, the house could move within that area. You can see it's kind of confined to that little, almost like a triangle, so.
Thank you.
Amanda.
Question, can you just, if I'm looking at this correctly, that the variation of the elevation would be a significant 40-foot drop? Is that correct? From the front of the property, around 312 to drop off to 270 towards the back of the property?
That's correct, yeah.
Is there, should there, would there be concern about the grade of that driveway to even be possible for it to be a driveway, considering there's a 40-foot cliff?
I wouldn't call it a cliff, but there was a road there at one time, as we recall, Old Lock Road. So, yeah, I think we can make it work. That's why we're having a design by an engineer right now.
I just didn't want to approve this lot line adjustment, and then it's not even possible to have a driveway that would be like a 25 percent...
An acceptable driveway to Peter of the engineering department that meets the requirements.
And the subdivision regulations do have a requirement of a slope no greater than 10 percent.
Yeah, I did raise a driveway issue during my view, as well as access to water and sewer, but I think if this is approved, then they still need to get a driveway permit.
Correct.
And they just wouldn't get a driveway permit without a properly designed driveway.
Right. And we'll get another look at it once they design, if it's approved, then we'll get another look at the driveway and how it slopes and...
Right. We're not looking at the, putting, you know, probably too many problems in front of it than what is in front of us today, so I just didn't mean to put...
Yep. Matt?
No. Thank you.
So again, it's, for those with any questions, you know, this is a lot line adjustment, not a building...
Subdivision.
Subdivision, sorry. Subdivision.
It's not a site plan.
What's that?
It's not a site plan.
No. Not a site plan. There'll be more discussion regarding that as well. Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Will we close the public hearing? I think I already closed the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing again if I didn't. Thank you very much for your testimony and information. So in our packets, goodness, way down on Section 8 in our packets, again, using the information that we heard tonight, the testimony the applicant provided, as well as the information in our packets as our finding of fact, we'll use that as a findings of fact to move forward. We've got a couple of waiver requests. 8.2 is to grant the waiver request below from the listed sections of the subdivision regulations, and that's Section 1501.3 required information to not provide wetland delineation in the rear of the large parcel where no development is proposed, and Section 53.4 required information to not provide topography information of the area, both parcels beyond what is necessary to show that both lots meet the requirements for buildable usable areas. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver request as outlined?
So moved.
Motion's been made. I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 8.3 is to grant minor subdivision approval for the two-lot subdivision at 61 Mountain Road, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1A through, holy cow, through S and then two...
One through 10.
One, one through 10. Let's do that. Thank you. One through 10 and subsequent conditions 1 through 6. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
I will second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and I believe, that's it, right? Yes.
Right.
That is it? So you're all set? Thank you very much. We'll move on in our agenda to Item 8D, if we could read that into the record.
Nine Ds.
Nine Ds.
Richard D. Bartlett and Associates LLC, on behalf of Boys and Girls Clubs of Central New Hampshire, Inc., request approvals for a minor subdivision application and certain waivers from the subdivision regulations for a two-unit condominium subdivision at 76 Community Drive in the Neighborhood Residential District.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have to recuse myself due to a conflict of being on the Board of Directors for Boys and Girls Club.
All right. For the record, Amanda Savage is recusing herself from this application. That still leaves us with a quorum, so we'll open the public hearing. We will get a quick staff update, if we could.
Completeness and not original impact.
Determination of completeness component. Thank you, Alec. Okay, so we do have a determination of completeness component, not a development of regional impact. Staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing's open. Let's get a quick staff update before we move forward, if we could, on this.
Sure. This was a major site plan a couple of years ago. They're looking for a two-lot condominium subdivision to separate the Boys and Girls Club with the Pennacook Library and Activity Center. And they're requesting one waiver to not provide electronic submission as required by our subdivision regulations, which staff is in support of.
Okay. Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record.
Well, good evening again. My name is Mark Sargent.
Oh, good to see you again, Mark.
I'm Beth Fenstermacher, Director of Special Projects for the City of Concord, partnering with Boys and Girls Club.
Nice to see you here again, Beth.
Missed you all. I wanted to say that.
Missed you as well. Okay. Tell us a little bit about this, if you can.
Sure. Well, the property is, I think everybody's familiar with, it's located at 76 Community Drive. It's the new Boys and Girls Club. It fronts on Community Drive, Dolphus Street, High Street, and has an area of .95 acres. The proposal for the board this evening is to create a two-unit condominium. Unit 1 would be located at the east end of the building. You can see that funny-shaped kind of rectangle there. That would be 1,480 square feet, and there is a small limited common area associated with unit 1 just outside the entrance to the building. I think it's like 8 by 10. And unit 2 would be the actual Boys and Girls Club. That's 7,495 square feet. There's also a limited common area associated with that. On the west end of the building, that's for a playground. We did request a waiver. That's the Section 1209, which is the electronic submission. And we originally did this survey back in 2001 before there was a requirement for state planning coordinates and the new vertical datum. And trying to be cost-effective for the Boys and Girls Club, we wanted to use the same datum. We used 2001 rather than update everything. And so, so that's why we're requesting this waiver. The, I noticed, though, in the conditions of approval, I guess would be number four of the, number four of the precedent's conditions. This says prior to the recording of the plat required by Section 1209, essentially what we're asking for a waiver for that's making a condition of approval, so I guess, you know, I want to make sure that's not in there. Other than that, if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or Beth?
Okay. I did notice in the packet, we've got a bunch of the following items from Section 11, 12, 13, and 15 from the subdivision regulations appear to be missing from the application. Are we comfortable with that, or have they been fixed, or is there stuff still missing?
The...
It's, go ahead.
The issue here was, people want, we wanted to get this done early, and the site was still in construction, so there were some things we couldn't do, but yet.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
They're kind of conflicting. There are two different sections in the subdivision regulations that deal with completeness. One lists the sections, but then the other says, doesn't list the section, but says, is there enough, if there's enough information presented, the board can give a full and detailed review? And in staff's estimation, yes, the items that aren't there are, I don't want to say trivial.
Yeah, they're minor. Blocks and titles and...
Titles, stuff. It's not anything significant, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Other questions, comments, concerns from the board? Any member, yes, Counselor Todd?
I don't have any concerns. I do have a comment, though.
I don't have any concerns. I do have a comment though. I think this is a great example of public-private partnership and I'm really looking forward to, uh, having this facility open and be available to the folks in Pennacook and greater Concord area.
And just for the record, for the millions and millions watching on TV, this isn't the new Boys and Girls Club like the old one is going away. This is.
Right.
A new and improved secondary location for the people of Concord and the Pennacook area in particular, so.
My mistake.
That's okay. We give you a, yeah, after that grueling session before, we'll give you a little bit of leeway on this one, so. Okay, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. So in your staff report we've got here, um, again, found the application complete. We will move on to the waivers. No variances, no variances are requested. Where am I headed, Henry? Here we go. Right there again. So findings of fact again is the data that we've, uh, we've been presented in our packets, the testimony we heard here tonight. And we'll use those as our findings of fact to make our decisions. And our first decision is to grant the waiver request below for the listed sections of the subdivision regulations using New Hampshire RSA six seven four thirty-six two N two and section thirty-eight oh, thirty-five oh eight of the subdivision regulations. Section twelve oh nine, a twelve point zero nine for electronic submissions to not provide electronic submissions as, uh, as outlined. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver request as outlined?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, uh, and eight point three is to grant minor subdivision approval for the two-unit condominium subdivision at seventy-six Community Drive, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions. And those are outlined in precedent conditions, one through seven and subsequent conditions, one. Yeah, just one, subsequent condition one. Yes, and we do want to, we want to take out, uh, item four, which is regarding the recording of the plat as outlined by the applicant, right?
It's the, it's the electronic submission.
Electronic submission.
Which is wait.
So we'll take that out completely, right?
Yes.
Okay. So again, that'll be one through.
One through six now.
One through six with, as it's submitted in our packet. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You guys are all set. Thank you very much. All right, let's move on to item nine E in our agenda. If we could read that in the record. Someone, hey, Mark, can you grab, uh, Amanda out in the hall and just tell her to come back in? Please, and thank you.
Okay. Ari Pollock and Gallagher Callahan and Gartrell, P.C., on behalf of Onyx Steeplegate Concord LLC, request approvals for an amendment to a major site plan approval and certain waivers from the site plan regulations to demolish portions of the existing former Steeplegate Mall at two seventy Loudon Road in the Gateway Performance District. And we will need to, uh, do a com, there's a completeness component that we'll need to do first. The, and I, I will just, uh, let the board know that initially they did not submit a, a complete demolition plan. And since the main portion of this request is to amend the major site plan approval for demolition, staff felt that it was prudent that we have that information. They, since the time the staff report was published, have submitted a complete demolition plan. It addresses all the items of completeness. So.
Yay.
The staff is comfortable reversing our, uh, recommendation of determining a completeness, complete and opening the public hearing.
Should we roundly chastise him when he comes up about the lateness of it or we let that go?
We, we let it go.
All right. Okay, so we have a determination of completeness component. It is a development of regional impact, I believe, as well, right?
No.
No?
This is already no.
No? Okay. All right.
Not for the demolition.
Yeah, I mean, my, I guess, Mr. Chairman, if you're asking for staff feedback, I, I mean, I think future redevelopment of the mall certainly will be.
Yeah, but the, for the, for this piece, it's not.
In this case, they're actually removing square footage and theoretically reducing traffic volumes and a whole bunch of other things because they're demolishing hundreds of thousands of square feet.
The only, my only, I had a question from a concerned citizen, if you will, on the Pembroke Aquifer. And it was any incursion into the Pembroke Aquifer that they wanted to make sure that that was appropriately addressed. And I'll address that to applicant, but that doesn't have anything to do with it still being a development of regional impact. Okay, so there is a determination. We'll have you guys come on up if you can, Ari. We, uh, do have a determination of completeness component, so let's, uh, let's go through that. Uh, staff has found the application for the demolition portion of this to be complete, not development of regional impact and to open the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so the public hearing's open. Do we need to get a staff update? Henry, I think we just heard it, so. That's about it. Okay, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Ari Pollock. I'm with the Gallagher Firm here in Concord. Uh, I'm appearing before you this evening for Onyx Steeplegate, the new owner of the Steeplegate Mall property. I'm joined by Doug Richardson of Onyx and Ian McKinnon, an engineer with Jones and Beach Firm. First, allow me to thank you for finding completeness. We're in a bit of an unusual posture for the amendment to existing site plan in the sense, uh, that it causes us to ask for a number of waivers. It causes us to be a little different than what you would typically see. Uh, the waivers are supported by staff because of this posture, but allow me to explain the details. The board knows that we are presently an applicant for a comprehensive development plan to redevelop the Steeplegate Mall. We presented that concept last fall, I believe. It was tabled to a date uncertain because there was a substantial amount of behind the scenes work that needed to be done. That, um, a traffic impact analysis has been completed. It is being, uh, teed up for peer review. Those are the types of studies and investigations that are necessary for us to bring that application back before you for consideration of the CDP and then the subsequent site plans that relate to that comprehensive development. We also, uh, stepped over to the zoning board for a series of variances. Uh, we were successful there. And we had a, a recent request for rehearing denied, so unless there's a further appeal, those variances would be final. Uh, we are within the appeal period, I should note. It was not our appeal, obviously. We received the variances. Meanwhile, uh, the property is in a difficult state of affairs. Uh, all you have to do is drive by to see that the interior spaces of the mall are boarded over. The parking areas associated with those interior entrances are fenced off. And there are, um, no, there are no operating tenants that need access to those interior areas. There are tenants who will remain in the post-development scenario who have exterior exits and entrances, have associated parking areas in front of or behind their frontage. And those businesses are operating yesterday, uh, today and tomorrow. Despite these measures to seal things off, if you will, we, uh, at the mall have become, uh, an attractive nuisance for a form of trespass and vandalism, uh, called urban exploring. This is a new, uh, a new entertainment or activity for me, but maybe some of you are familiar. I've seen some of the press coverage. It was, uh, written up recently in the union leader. I think the Monitor also ran a companion story. The photograph shows, uh, Concord Police Department arresting a number of individuals who thought it would be fun to break in and have a party and destroy stuff. And so obviously that's a public safety issue that, uh, simply can't wait for the comprehensive development plan to take its full course, for site plans to take its full course, for conditions of approvals to be analyzed and resolved and for plans and to be signed and permits to be issued. You know, normally, excuse me, normally we would simply apply for a demolition permit. The mall structure is less than fifty years old. Uh, we would, uh, apply at the staff level. We would receive the permit and the wrecking ball would swing. Um, the complication here is that there's a desire to protect and preserve portions of the building. And so it's not as simple as we want to knock it all down. It's actually a selective demolition. And when we talked with staff about we're a bit of a square peg in a round hole, the compromise or not even compromise, but the, the resolution that we landed on was let's amend the existing site plan, the one that best reflects the existing condition, so that we can show what stays, what goes, and how what stays is supported unless and until the redevelopment plan comes forward. And so that's essentially what you have in front of you, uh, tonight. The fencing is already up. The driveways that access the areas to be retained are, uh, in use today. Anyone who needs to be there for a legitimate purpose can find their path, can park their vehicle, can go where they want to go and stay as long as they want doing business with both tenants to remain and, and, and neighbors near on the prom, property. We, uh, we also received approval from the Architectural Design Committee to wrap the now exterior portions of the boxes to remain in the same fashion as they are finished to the exterior now. In other words, if you are looking at the J.C. Penney, and I did have a, a, a graphic that was in the application. I don't know that it's terribly important. But if you're, if you're in the parking lot looking at the J.C. Penney, you'll see the front. We now are going to expose more of the sides and the rear, and those exposed areas will be finished in the same fashion. At least, uh, for the purpose of making them safe, stable and secure, but perhaps then subject to change as the CDP moves forward, as site plans move forward. And more specifically with the trampoline park side of the mall building as a common scheme of development comes forward with that mixed-use property where we'll have retail and residential. We, uh, we have had an opportunity to, uh, review the conditions of approval recommended by staff. We appreciate the support for the waivers. The waiver requests are accompanied by a letter from my firm dated July eighth, twenty twenty-four, which, um, uh, recites each of the items and, uh, goes through the site plan regulation criteria for granting, uh, of those waivers. Um, we appreciate how the staff has helped us thread the needle on what is a little bit different. Um, we're, we're happy to take your question now, uh, or, uh, later. Something tells me I'll be back up here shortly. Thank you.
Questions for, uh, Mr. Pollock? Remember the audience have any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, come on up. Is that what it reads? Say please sign in. Is that what that says? Some people knew how to sign in and I wasn't sure why. Now I know. Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
Do you want me to sign in?
Yeah, we can do that afterwards.
Uh, my name is Laura Gandia. I'm an attorney with Divine Millamette and Branch in Manchester, New Hampshire.
Any? Any issues? What? Okay, all right. Sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead. I'm not going to be able to sit and read and listen to you at the same time anyways.
If I gave enough. Um, so again, my name is Laura Gandia, attorney with Divine Millamette and Branch representing Silver Holding LLC, a director, butter and owner of two seventy-seven Chief Davis Road, one of the three units in the Steeplegate Mall Land Condominium. Um, I did send a letter yesterday when I was under the impression that the application would not be accepted as complete. I have since received from town staff, so, from staff, so thank you for forwarding me the updated plan. Um, so you had that letter. This is it, and I am now submitting additional information in my July seventeenth letter. So with this new information, um, that I received late last night, we were under the impression that a likelihood of a public hearing would occur at tonight's meeting. So I'm offering on behalf of Silver Holding the following in opposition to the approval of the major site plan. Um, first, I wanted to just briefly touch upon the demolition plan. Um, we do believe that that is only a partial demolition plan. We believe it lacks the necessary information that's crucial, um, to really hone in on what's going to happen when this four hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot portion of a building is going to be destroyed. Um, we believe that the plan lacks staging areas, um, traffic circulation, where the equipment trucks will enter and exit, waste disposal, staging areas, just to name a few. With that, we also note that the project is seeking over a dozen waivers. And those waivers basically impact drainage, grading and drainage, topography, lighting, access and driveway standards, erosion control. So I did look at the city's regulation of how you determine whether or not a waiver should be granted. And there's a lot there. Your regulations, and I did on page two of my, uh, second letter, go through and just kind of outline the questions that needed to be asked and answered for each of those, um, waiver requests. And it's a lot. So I did do the analysis for each of the waivers that we had concerns with. And our opinion is that the applicant has failed to successfully meet the criteria necessary for this board to lawfully and reasonably grant any waiver request for the ones that we pointed out. And I'll just go through some of the initial ones. So the first question that the board would need to consider is if any of these following circumstances exist. An unnecessary hardship may result from strict compliance with these regulations. Or two, that specific circumstances relative to the site plan or conditions in the site plan indicate that the spirit and intent of these regulations may be served to a greater extent by an alternative proposal. And we said, no, we don't believe that the applicant met that first criteria. The applicant did not put forward a position in support of unnecessary hardship. Rather, the applicant contends there are specific circumstances or conditions, although none are described in the project narrative, that indicate that the spirit and intent of the regulations may be served to a greater extent by an alternative proposal, but there was no alternative proposal given. So right there we have, that answered the question. One has to be no. The applicant contends that the alternative position, that the alternative proposal is the unknown completion of the unapproved comprehensive redevelopment plan. Silver Holding contends that there are no circumstances or conditions justifying the granting of the waiver and no reasonable alternative proposal was offered. The second question that the board needs to consider is can approval of the waivers be granted so that substantial justice may be done? Again, Silver Holding contends the answer to that question is no. The applicant contends that substantial justice is served by facilitating demolition of areas subject to urban explorers. Silver Holding does not see the connection between granting these waivers and urban explorers and contends that the applicant's analysis is misplaced. We do appreciate those public safety concerns regarding the urban explorers, but those are not the public and safety concerns that you need to focus on when you're talking about drainage and topography and lighting. Further substantial justice is done by holding the applicant to the standards put forth in the city's site plan regulations. The next question is, would approval of these waivers have the effect of nullifying the spirit and intent of these regulations? We said they absolutely would. The applicant contends that the spirit and intent of the regulations are secured by facilitating demolition of areas subject to urban explorers. Silver Holdings, once again, does not see the connection between providing, between granting the waivers and the, uh, granting the waves and the urban explorers that, um, concern that the applicants put forward. Again, we think that the applicant's analysis is misplaced. And then you get into the four, um, questions. Did the applicant present evidence so that the planning board, planning board can satisfactorily make findings to the following? And I went through the whole analysis for each of the waivers that we are concerned with. I don't want to go through my nineteen pages, but it's all there and there's a lot there. And there's a lot for the board to consider. The first one is the drainage and the grading. There was a couple of waivers that coincided or overlapped regarding grading and drainage. We feel we absolutely need to know what the drainage plan is, what the grading is, what's going to happen. This is not a small demolition. This is demolishing four hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of an existing five hundred and fifty thousand square foot building. What is this going to do to the water flow? What is this going to do to storm management? We have no idea. We are director butter with pavement in between TD Bank, which is Silver Holding's tenant, and the mall. What's going to happen? That is very important information for us to know. And I know there was concerns mentioned about, you know, aquifer concerns. I would echo those came, same concerns. What's happening? We have no idea. Um, the topography, I know they asked for a waiver for topography. Again, that coincides with how's the water going to flow? Once you get rid of this extremely large structure, what is going to happen? The lighting, uh, we've had concerns with that. Are they removing lighting? I think, my understanding is that it's staying the same. I wasn't quite sure, so I'm just putting that out there. Um, the access and driveway standing, standard waiver that they're requesting. What we have concerns as far as where the construction vehicle is going to go. How are they going to exit into the property? We don't want them near TD Bank. We don't want them affecting our client's operations. They can exit and enter off of Temanti Drive or maybe Loudon Road, but we don't want them coming by our business. And we don't know what that's going to look at. We didn't see anything on the demolition plan that stated where these trucks are going, where they're entering, where they're exiting. We don't know. And the next, one of the other waivers that are of significant concern is erosion control. And all these kind of tying together, the storm water management, the erosion control, the drainage, the topography. What are they going to use for erosion control? I have no idea, but as, for my client, we need to know. Their business wants to know. TD Bank wants to know what's going to happen. Are they using storm fencing? What's going to happen if there's a major rainstorm? And you have now what I believe they said it's going to be just a concrete slab of four hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot concrete slab that's going to be left. square foot concrete slab that's going to be left? What's going to happen to the water?
Right. So summarize it up for me if you could. I mean, you're concerned with erosion, you're concerned with water...
Yep. I'm concerned that they didn't meet this, this spirit and intent of the zoning. Again, everything's there. The start of construction, and I know they said, well, it's going to be temporary, it's going to happen. The start of construction is unknown. There is going to be pending litigation that's being brought forward. We vehemently object it to all those, most of those variants requests at the ZBA. We filed a motion for rehearing that has been denied. My client has instructed me to file an appeal with the land court, so that's going to be delaying any type of construction that may happen. We don't have a detailed plan that adheres to the city's regulations regarding those issues. All of these concerns have a direct and immediate effect on a direct debuter, its tenants and its business operations. We are requesting that the waiver request be denied and/or in the internal, that the approval be denied, and if the waiver request, the applicant is found to have to abide by those and submit those applications and submit their documentation for the waiver request, then we ask that we be given a submission amount of time to review and analyze any additional documents that's submitted.
Okay. Questions? Yes.
Thank you very much. Would it be fair to say that with or without this waiver, what you're seeking now with drainage and all those other kinds of things, would happen when it comes time to demolish the mall? Meaning, they're looking for a waiver to change the plan to start earlier?
Earlier.
What you are concerned with would happen, whether it be earlier or later? Is that, is that true?
I'm not sure. So, I mean, our concern is just to make sure that we know that there's a drainage plan in effect.
Right.
If that's coming, that, I'm not sure. So I understand that this was our opportunity to come forth and express our concerns regarding the demolition in the plan. So there was a demolition plan that wasn't submitted, now it was. We reviewed that and we don't see that information. So if that's going to be coming at a later date, that's a different story, and we would like to have the opportunity to weigh in on that, but it's my understanding that this was our time to come in and express those concerns over drainage and erosion control.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much for the testimony. Does anybody else, anybody else have any questions, concerns about this application? Well, we'll invite, yes, sir, come on up.
Hi.
Hi, if you could state your name for the record?
My name is Tom Graham. I've never done this kind of thing before, so bear with me.
Are you in a butter, Tom?
What's that?
Are you in a butter or just a concerned citizen?
I grew up, I don't live there anymore, my parents still do, directly across the street, Route 106, Sheep Davis Road. And for decades, since the mall began, we have two driveways. If this is Damonte Drive and this is 106, our two driveways are here and here, south and north of Damonte Drive. And so twenty years, it's been a bit of a rat maze to get into our driveway, and if you need to go south, it's another rat maze to get out and go south on 106. If you're going north, it's just a right-hand turn. So what's been happening increasingly through the years is traffic coming out Damonte and taking a left, and so this has happened to me twenty times in the last, within the last month or so. I take a left, there's a line of cars behind me, I start slowing down, so my brake lights are on, I have my right-hand signal on, and I'm moving to the right to take that right-hand turn into the driveway because it's a stone's throw, that's it. And you have cars that are accelerating up 106, they beep, or they're just like right on your butt. It's, it's like there's going to be an accident at some point. Hasn't been yet, but... And the other time, the other thing is, especially during rush hour traffic, you can't turn north on 106 to get into traffic anywhere because, you know, there's a long stream on 106. When they get the red light, then it starts streaming off Damonte Drive. So my parents are both in their early nineties, so they're hanging in there, but, you know, we haven't needed an ambulance to get in there. Like I said, it's a rat maze to go around through the mall, come back out to Monte, figure out how to get into the driveway.
So hopefully there'll be a, I'm going to guess there's going to be several hearings going forward regarding the development phase, so tonight we're here talking about the demolition piece of it, which is, which is...
When she mentioned driveways, I bet her, I better...
I got you. No, you're on the record, you're on the record now, so you're going to be an old pro by the time the third or fourth meeting comes around. Should development move forward with this, it's only going to get worse. I mean, it's, it's going to be as bad as it was at Tahideh of the mall as far as the number of people coming and going out there.
And that was my point.
So you'll need to, you'll need to keep an eye on the, on the, on the city's website and the debuter information that you get, because you'll get another chance to come in and talk to us about, about driveways, about turning, about lights, about extra, extra space to be able to pull off the side of the road. We'll address all that, but we won't do that for a little bit of time until we have a comprehensive development plan, until the applicant comes through with a, with a major site plan, and then we'll address all of those, all of those concerns. And there may be some structural issues on 106 and things that need to be looked at as well to handle that type of stuff that you might be able to benefit from.
Yeah.
But I can't speak to that until we have something to, to be able to look at.
All right. Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right, we'll have you sign in and, yes, I'm sorry, quick question from...
Quick question. What's your address, sir?
The address at my parents' address, where I, I grew up before the mall was even there, is 274 Sheep Davis Road.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll just have you grab that sheet and pull it right on the table behind you there, and we'll have the applicant come back up. That'll give you a chance to sign in a little bit.
Okay.
Pretty sure there's nobody else from the public that wants to speak, right? No, okay. Okay, so welcome back to the table, and again, just for the record, Ari Pollock?
It's me.
Still, still Ari Pollock?
I am.
Okay.
Let me be brief in rebuttal, because I think the board members can see through what's happening here. Staff has reviewed the waiver requests. We did supply a letter of support dated July eighth, twenty twenty-four, that goes through each item and essentially explains how the, the interim scenario we find ourselves in really resolves a number of the types of site plan requirements that you would typically look for. Topography is not going to change from the existing condition. We're going to leave the slabs of the buildings in place primarily to resolve changes or to prevent changes in drainage scenario in the interim condition. We don't want to have changes that need to be accommodated now. We're going to show on that utility and demolition plan to staff's...
Thank you.
...satisfaction that the remaining sections of the building can be supported. What you've got here is a condominium form of governance. The condominium form of governance is created by contract, it's not created by ordinance. It's not a matter the planning board gets to decide yes or no about. It's what we created or our predecessors created and we inherited it, and we love it. Let me, let me say, the fences are installed now. There have been no complaints relative to access or driveways. There is more than sufficient parking for what is happening in this interim condition. We had a very long explanation of parking issues in front of the ZBA, which I won't repeat now. The view from the TD Bank or Silver Holding condominium land unit is primarily the end cap where altitude and Zoo Fitness will relocate to. And again, that'll be finished in the manner of the exterior now. We'll wrap the rest of what becomes exposed as it is now. And so to the extent that there are aesthetic concerns, they'll be same yesterday and tomorrow, today and tomorrow, less than until the redevelopment scenario occurs. I guess the, you know, the overriding comment here is, we're trying to do something to address a public safety threat. I think the neighborhood would appreciate the neutralization of that public safety threat. Having urban explorers, which I think is a polite way of saying trespassers and vandals, no longer have interest in what is an unused property, improves the situation for all of those who live in that area. And so you might ask yourself, why would somebody oppose that situation? Why would somebody not want us to make it safer? And I think you all know the answer. So I'll leave it there. I thank you for your consideration. I'll remind you that we worked with staff to create a pathway for what we're asking for, which is some stays, some goes, figure out the overall redevelopment in the form of a different application.
And I meant to ask this question before, but this, this, this four hundred thousand square feet is just the mall building, not the adjacent movie theater or whatever it is, correct?
Yes. Thank you for bringing that up. Let me clarify. That, the Regal Cinema improvements are on a separate parcel.
Okay.
And they are actually owned by a different affiliated company of my client.
Okay.
When that building is ready to come down, just by contrast and example, it will be a complete demolition of that structure, and we won't need to come through this board for a site plan amendment. We'll simply apply for what is the typical demolition permit.
And just as a reminder, the reason you're here is because you're leaving buildings, not if you, if you had to do it and take all the buildings, you wouldn't even be here.
We have some tenants who are operating there now who would be very unhappy to see that their building got knocked down.
I imagine they would be. And again, for the record, I believe that condo, that the, the person that came in before for TD Bank, that was speaking before on behalf of TD Bank, is a property that's, the Onyx Properties now owns that condominium or however the condo docs work or...
So the condominium has three land units.
Yeah.
The mall proper is one of them.
Yeah.
The bank property is a second of them, and the Appleby Restaurant is the third.
Okay. All under the Onyx umbrella.
It is all part of a condominium. Onyx is part of the condominium.
Okay, okay. And then we heard some questions regarding truck movement and things like that, and again, you're going to move on your property and not a but, or not move onto, onto property that's not yours, correct?
We're certainly not going to move onto the bank's land unit. We're going to move on our property to public streets.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilor Todd?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Pollock, have you heard from any of the other tenants or neighbors or debutters with concerns about demolition in terms of some of the issues that have been brought forth here tonight, like drainage, lighting, et cetera?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Pierce?
A member, Santa Cruz, called me earlier to tell me that he wouldn't be here, and he had two questions.
Hit him.
He, he wanted to know how the site was going to be screened and secured in the interim after demolition and construction of the new project.
I believe the fencing will remain.
And then he noticed that the roofs now are flat, they have roof drains. Once those flattened roofs are demolished with the roof drains also being demolished, where will the water go that once hit the roof drains?
The roof, the water will hit the slab, which is elevated from what surrounds the slab, and then gravity will take over when it runs off the slab.
Okay, so again, there's a question of all those roof drains draining into a central drain which drains into underground. That information would then, would then, or that rain would then just naturally migrate with gravity, but it could go in any direction at that point.
See, now you're asking questions that are beyond my pay grade.
Bring some help in.
So I have to bring up some expertise.
He sat here for the whole meeting, he's got to come up and tell us where the water's going.
It wasn't my fault, Your Honor.
Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure. Ian McKee with Jones Beach Engineers. As was mentioned, the reason that the three structures that we've shown to remain, so there are technically three separate structures, are two, the existing trampoline park, the adjacent Old Bon Ton, which the zoo is relocating to, those are actually structurally separate. They were added on at a later date. Their roof drains, their utilities, they take separate utility connections, so their roof drains are actually taken separately off the north side. Same with JCPenney. They don't receive any utility connections in, from the internal mall structure. They have their own power transformer, sewer, water, and any sort of roof drain connections. So the updated plan that we submitted to staff really shows for this initial phase of demolition, everything will be brought down to slab. There really isn't a need to rip up utilities in the ground until the next phase of development moves forward. So there'll be no impact to, no known impact to any roof drains or anything like that because they are structurally separate.
Right, but those roof drains aren't going to work, so rain that's hitting the slab isn't going to drain into the roof drain, it's going to just accumulate on the slab and run off at some point or somewhere. And I hate to even mention it, but, you know, my logic brain tells me to dam it all up with, 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 you know, the things that would hold the water in and then have them go down through the existing drains, but that causes all kinds of problems. They'll fill up with water and be little ponds.
Yeah, and the, the benefit of, if you think it's going to be at slab and as already mentioned, the, it will eventually flow off onto, you know, across walkways that exist there today. Because of the existing stormwater infrastructure that exists in the parking lots, that's where it would be collected. We can certainly, you know, the JCPenney's a unique one, we can certainly make sure, and we would have to, under our obligations, make sure that they didn't have any water problems coming at them. You always like to say the slab is flat, but generally they're not perfect.
Yeah, it's going to find, it's going to find a level somewhere, so...
But there's certainly avenues to keep water.
So would there be, would there be an opportunity to say, a ten or fifteen or twenty-foot area around the outside of the concrete slab be removed from pavement so at least the water has a chance to migrate into the ground? I mean, would that work to mitigate runoff that goes wherever it might go? And again, I'm, worst case scenario, it all funnels to TD Bank. I just want to look at it and say, you know, it's going to go to the detention pond at some point that's there. Would it be a logical, while you're there and the last swipe through with the, with the graders is, is take off ten or fifteen or twenty feet of tar all the way around the slab, and that will give you a little bit of a buffer? I don't know, it doesn't seem like it'd be an expense or huge expense.
I, I think it's a helpful suggestion. I would refrain from, if I could, I would refrain from making that a condition of approval.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because we want to have the, the conversation with our engineering group, our demolition group, and staff, of course, to see whether or not conditions of approval are satisfied. The last thing I want to do is...
Do something that causes problems, yeah.
Well, do something on the fly that creates infiltration areas, and now I need a revision to...
Yeah, I got you.
...the existing drainage condition, which we're trying to avoid.
Okay, you can use it as your idea if you want to bring it forward.
I will do that, thank you.
Okay, all right. Yes, Earl?
And there, I don't want to let this water thing go, I just want to get it clear in my head. You have a roof, you have drains, it rains, the water comes down the drains, goes into storm drains or the sewer system, or where does that water now go when it comes down off the roof? Through the drain?
Yes.
What's, what's the other end of the pipe?
Ultimately, everything ends up at the pond, the city pond on the backside through a large, large dispersion system.
Okay. So now you're going to remove the roof, which remains the, removes the drain, and now you have the rain that's coming down out of the sky hitting the slab. You have regular storm drains in the parking lot that will absorb some of it?
In the same systems that those roof drains currently tie into anyway.
Yep.
Okay. But it won't get into the drain that goes into the pond underground, right? It'll be surface?
It'll be surface until it hits those structures in the parking lot. It will always hit a structure prior to...
All right.
...getting to the pond.
Thank you.
If I may say, correct me if I'm wrong, but in parking lots where the drains, a lot of times the, it is pitched towards those drains, so it's not completely flat. It has a pitch to it so that when the runoff comes off of the slab...
Good point.
...you would hope that it would hit those pitches and, and follow into the drain and not just run all the way down to the bank.
Right. Have you seen the condition of those parking lots, just...
I know that there's cracks and there's grass and there's...
They're very attractive to urban explorers.
The grass will slow it down.
The grass will slow it down.
Good point.
There's actually not, there's not a single part of the parking lot that just flows off, so you're correct. There always would be a, a collection point.
Council Pierce. Our councilor.
Dang it, Paul! Dang it! Well, I think that's an improvement.
That's an improvement. Council something.
Thank you. Yeah, I would just like to reiterate the chair's suggestions as a possibility, because as was pointed out, you know, those, those parking lot drains are... as was pointed out, you know, those, those parking lot drains are there and capable of handling the runoff of water that applies to that surface in the parking lot. But now you're going to tech, theoretically, you're going to be adding this extra piece to all of those drains. And so, you know, I think it might be worthwhile just having the engineering study that and just see what, maybe it's, maybe it's the chair's suggestion or some other suggestion to be, make sure that those parking lot drains don't reach overcapacity, which could then potentially cause some issues.
Yeah, and 100%. And I mean, the reason I'm deflecting a little bit is because the conditions of approval already address these concerns, and we need to satisfy your city staff before we can have the site plan amendment signed.
That's the first thing.
So these things will get addressed in one form or another. I'm just not comfortable determining how to do it in a public hearing.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, other questions? All right, well, good. Thank you very much. We'll close the public hearing and look in your packets for information, anything else from, from staff, just for clarification again on our packets of information are different than what we heard from staff before regarding the determination of completeness piece of it. However, the waivers that are outlined are all the same, right? There's no changes to those. Okay, so I'm not going to read through all the waivers that are there because there's a bunch of them. But again, using our, the information that we heard here tonight as our findings of fact, the packet of information that we got, the testimony that we heard to, to give us the basis for making some decisions. Again, staff recommends, so skip past that one. Eight point two is to grant architectural design review approval for the demolition of approximately 425,000 square feet of the former Steeplegate Mall Building at 270 Loudon Road, subject to the following condition. The new exposed elevation be designed with matching materials such as bricks and colors to match existing facades, which the applicant said that they would be doing. In the development piece, eight point two, would someone like to make a motion to grant that architectural design review approval as outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and roundly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point three is to grant the waiver request outlined in your packet here. And again, they start with 12.03, 12.033, and they go down through Section 29, regarding lighting. Would someone like to make a motion to grant the waiver request below as outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eight point four is to grant approval of the major site plan amendment for the demolition of approximately 425,000 square feet of the former Steeplegate Mall Building at 270 Loudon Road on tax map lots that are listed there, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through 10, and subsequent conditions one through six. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that major site plan amendment as outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You are all set. Good luck. Thank you, everybody, for your testimony. Let's move on to the next item on our agenda, 9F. If we could read 9F into the, into the record.
Okay. Nobis Group and Warren Street Architects on behalf of Riverbend Community Mental Health Inc. and Catch Neighborhood Housing request approvals for a major site plan, architectural design review, conditional use permit to exceed the maximum height for an pertinent structure, and certain waivers from the site plan regulations for a 28-unit multifamily residential building at 6 North State Street in the Central Business Performance District.
Okay, so staff has determined the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and do we do the waiver to request the step, the two-step process?
We do.
Separately from determination of completeness or do it before?
Yeah, before.
Probably before.
Yeah, before.
So let's outline the waiver request to determine the application complete and notice in one process as opposed to two. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that waiver as so eloquently outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Any favor?
Aye.
Not opposed? That motion carries, so we will make a motion to determine the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and not a development of regional impact?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll open the public hearing. Let's get a staff update on this one.
Okay. This is, this project has had variance requests that were approved by the zoning board of adjustment for density and to allow something other than a commercial use on the first floor. With those variance requests, it meets all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. This is in a zone that doesn't require screening for trash receptacles, doesn't require loading, it doesn't require parking. It doesn't require that the building be flush against the sidewalk. It has an 80-foot maximum height, which the building itself is 79 and a half feet, but there is an pertinent structure on top of it that's almost eight feet tall, so that pushes us above the 80 feet, thus the conditional use permit request. And it's a 28-unit multifamily project. The first floor will be an office, clubroom facility, and the trash room, which does have egress to the outside. The staff report does note that we would like the applicant to specify how they are managing pickup, the waste collection, to pick up that receptacle without impeding traffic.
Welcome to the table. If you guys could state your names for the record?
Good evening. My name is Tom Fritato. I'm the president and CEO of Catch Neighborhood Housing. And I have Chris Netto from the Nobis Group here, and Jonathan Holly from Warren Street Architects. And thank you for your time this evening. As, as you stated, we're seeking approval for a 28-unit, eight-story residential apartment building on 6 North State Street, which will be a development for affordable and workforce housing residents. We have met all of the requirements and received variances we needed, as Anne Marie stated, from zoning. And tonight, we'd like to present what the project will be and answer, obviously, answer any questions. I also have Phil Hastings as our counsel. He's sitting in the back row. So I would like Chris to just go over the site plan, and then Jonathan will follow with the architectural specifics.
All right, thanks, Tom. Chris Netto, Nobis Group. As far as the site is concerned, I'll be brief because it is very small. It's a .5 acre piece of property, mostly occupied by the building. There is no parking, as parking's not required in the zone. We do have on-street parking. We're not losing any on-street parking spaces. The site currently is, is an existing parking lot, private parking lot for the, for the building across the street. All the utilities will come from North State Street. Really, nothing remarkable about the site itself. We are asking for three waivers, one which you just granted, one which staff is recommending not approving, and which, let me clarify, that, that's the one with, related to the traffic control plan. We're not asking to waive the requirement for the traffic control plan. We fully anticipate providing that to staff before construction, but we want to get a general contractor on board to, to go through exactly how they're going to construct the building and what, what they need for, you know, as far as maybe taking up sidewalk or part of the road. We really need the general contractor to weigh in before we prepare the traffic control plan. So we expect that as a condition of, of, if we receive an approval, and we'll provide that to the city. Everything else, from a site perspective, is pretty straightforward. I think Jonathan really has the, the meat and potatoes of the presentation as...
And just, Chris, just for the record, you said it's a .15 acre lot?
That's correct. Small.
10 pounds, 10 pounds in a five-pound lot. Okay. The floor is yours, Mr. Halli.
Okay, so, thank you. See if this works. So I'm just going to, you can see the property line here that wraps around. You'll see that the building sets five feet and then an additional six feet setback that bumps out. There's little towers on the corner. So we're within five feet of the property line on three sides, 11 feet here, 11 feet here, and then we're 10 feet back from the property line on the front. The entrance to the building is in the southwest corner, under, undercover, if you will. And I'll go through this, so there's a bunch of issues that we can talk to.
Why the setback? Just out of curiosity. I was wondering, was, I was looking at the architecturals.
Why the five to the six feet?
Yeah.
Because there's a requirement for rating the walls and the amount of window opening you can have. And I have a table here, and I'll, I'll explain it further.
Okay, sorry.
So you can understand. So just briefly, I just wanted to hit on the fact that we did, early in the study, we did, in the, in the design, we did a corridor study to make sure that we weren't blocking with the eight stories, the view of the Capitol. So that's an issue gone, and, and we don't have to go back. This gives you some, a little perspective of this being State Street here, and the red building being where we are, which is actually directly across the parking lot from where my office used to be. This is the building, so I have, we've modeled this in, in three dimensions. This is an actual physical model that is placed. Google actually allows you now to actually pull up the buildings, so you'll see some more of that. But this is giving you an idea. We did probably 30 or 40 elevation studies with the client from the traditional residential, you know, white and gray, and, and I'm going to show you some pictures of what you approved for the old employment security building. But out of that conversation came, we're tasked with doing workforce housing and to create a very cost-effective envelope. So this is Niche Har Panel. It's the same panel that was used on the employment security building, but it's done in a little bit more, a funner way with, with some color. But to give you perspective, this is eight stories, 28 one-bedroom apartments. So there's four apartments on each floor. The ground floor is common space. It's a community room, support space, laundry, that kind of thing. And as Chris mentioned, this is the perspective looking north. To give you some idea, you're going to see these colorful fins on the side of the building, and I'm going to explain to you where those came from. This may take a second here, but this is, this is actually the Google 3D, so I apologize for the sort of morphed buildings, but it's, it's giving you, at least it gives you a massing of where we are here. But the ground floor, the four stories adjacent, but it gives you a little context in terms of how large this building is on this site.
So just for curiosity, so that's from Google, like Google Earth or Google?
Google Earth actually has a professional Google Pro now, and you can actually pull up the three-dimensional images.
Oh, my God.
And they're refining it, so as, as this happens, if I had more time, we could have pasted the actual elevations, but I, I didn't have, it just didn't work.
Yeah, okay.
But it's giving you context. You'll see that all of the buildings to the east, to the south, they're all flat. You've got the Rivermead Buildings across and the old Concord Monitor Building off to the side here. That's where Dennehy's housing project is going to be. And then there, directly to the north, there's a couple of buildings that I'll show you. So I'm going to address specifically the ADR comments. And again, I, I suppose I owe an apology to the, to this board and to ADR. I didn't get noticed. I was on vacation. Nobody showed up for ADR, so I can't speak personally to what those comments were, but apparently they didn't like it.
They weren't kind.
They weren't kind. So the first one is their, their feedback was that this building should not exceed the average height of the existing buildings, the existing adjacent buildings. I'm just going to note that in the CBP zone, the, the height is allowed to be 80 feet, and we're under that requirement. We do have to have a conditional use permit for the appendatures that are above that. The little white box that you see on the roof is actually the stair tower that comes up in the middle of the building that allows access to the roof. There's a small four-foot elevator penetration that also pops up. And what you don't see here, which would be covered within that, that eight feet, if you will, is the mechanical equipment. I'm sure there's going to be condensers and things that, that would fly. But I guess my point here is we're within what is, what is allowed. And you'll see that in the CBP, that requirement is 80 feet. The second one was their comment that the roof forms should relate to the roof forms of the adjacent structures. So I just want to go through here a little bit and show you that State Street is the separation between the CBP and the CP zones. So you kind of go from downtown to residential structures, if you will, for lack of a better way of explaining it. The structures get smaller as you move to the west. But there are flat buildings, flat-roof buildings, that are well two, three streets into that zone. And I start with the police station. The two, this is actually on State Street. These are, these buildings I measured, this, the building on the corner is actually 52 feet to the top. The YMC across the street, which is actually in the CVP on the other side of the zone, is 42 feet to the top of that roof. You'll see, you're looking at the corner of, of Warren Street now and, and South State Street, the, what used to be the toy store, the white building, which is a dentist office, and then the lot that is open beyond that. If I look, if I come to Pleasant Street and I look back, you're going to see that Mark Zabrowski's in the corner buildings are all flat, that the building directly to the south of our property, the yellow building with the sort of castle entablature on the top, is a flat building. One block up on the end of Warren and, just north of Green Street, this is another flat building across the street is the housing. It's all flat buildings. And looking down Warren, you know, we've got the old, the old bank and the Phoenix Building across the street. So, and if I go two blocks further now, down, you've got Concord Housing and you've got the Capital Arts, which are all flat buildings. That fly for the, for the stage is just shy of 70 feet tall. So that, the question that I have is, the comment from ADR is that these roof, the roof structure or the roof design should be something different than what the neighboring buildings are? The neighboring buildings are, the majority are flat-roofed buildings.
Did I, I was reading it as maybe like a, some type of a treatment to kind of finish off the roof as opposed to the objection to the flatness of the roof, like the police station building? If you looked at the police station building, it's, comes up and just goes across the top. My...
So it's got a little entablature.
Yeah, maybe I misread it, but maybe there's some type of a dentil or some type of a molding or some type of a treatment on the top. That's what, that's what I was looking, that's what, that's the way I read it, whether that's right or wrong. That was the only point. I don't think I have a problem with either one of them, but I, my, my thought was that was what they were kind of driving at.
I, I don't disagree with you. In fact, on these particular studies, we actually had sort of a crown on, inside of the towers that kind of leaped out.
Yeah.
And then my own staff kept coming back going, we're doing affordable housing. We're doing, you know, I've got this gentleman that says, you know...
It's an extra 25 grand.
Get your hand out of my pocket. Get your hand out of my pocket.
So let's talk about, let's, let's, let's move past the roof and talk about the, the windows. And I don't want to say shark tank or shark cages, because I don't want to say anything about that, but I, but I, I think I read in there, it looks like a prison window or something. I think the, somewhere along the line, I saw a prison window. And, and I, I know the answer to it, but I want to ask what the, what the reasoning is for the small windows. I, I think it's bathrooms or, or that...
They are. So I'm going to explain, the third issue that they raised was scale and proportion. They talk about winding, windows and wall openings should be, again, similar to the structures surrounding it. So as you can see, this is the east and north elevations. Again, if, if I can just go through this with you, so you see the table on the right-hand side, and I apologize, is going to tell you that for, this is within three to five feet of the property line. So these towers are within three to five feet. I'm allowed to have 15% of that area of the wall as openings. have fifteen percent of that area of the wall as openings. Anything beyond that has to have a fire sprinkler wash, meaning I have to put sprinkler heads on the outside or fire shutters on the windows.
Okay.
On, and that's the reason why we moved the center portion of these walls back six feet, because then the requirement, up until, up until, up until ten feet, you're allowed twenty-five percent wall cover, over ten, ten feet, eleven to fifteen, I can have as much as forty-five percent of the wall window openings. So, we did a study, and I'm just showing you, just for context if you will, this is the building in the back of the property, which that window area is probably less than ten percent. This is the back of the Oddfellow home, again, very, the ratio is very small, the ratio again here in the corner of Pleasant Street, and this is one, one building on the other side of Pleasant Street, and you can see the amount of windows. So I took the building for State Street, this yellow building, and did a quick analysis if you will. You, you look at that elevation and you go, "There's a lot of window there." Well, in fact, that window, we did that calculation based on the elevation, that's twenty percent of the wall area is window area, that, that's what exists today. The front is twenty-three percent, it's a little squatter, a little more window, but to me, if you look at that in terms of the amount of window that's there, you would say that's pretty reasonable, but it's only a twenty percent coverage. So we went back and we did the calculations, I'm showing you here, this is the floor plan, floors two through, two through eight. What's highlighted in yellow are the windows, so as you come up, the stairwells, there are two stairs and an elevator and a common, you know, double-loaded corridor, you come in, there's an apartment, there's windows on the west side, those two windows that are in the bathrooms are up high, again, I have to be under that fifteen percent wall area if you will on, and that's to all of the property lines, that's not just to the property line to the south. And then I have a, a large window to the living room, to the, to the kitchen, and a large window if you will, to the one-bedroom. So this, this is one apartment, this is one apartment over to here, and they mirror. So there, the bedrooms are in the center, the living spaces are on the corner, and the bathrooms are the towers on, on each side. So we did an analysis based on that and tried to get the windows as big as we could, if you will. The windows to the north, which is the same as to the south, which is that yellow building, is twenty percent of the wall overall, and I am, I believe I'm at eleven percent on the towers, so I have to calculate that in, in two ways. And then on the, the shorter axis, which is east and west, we, we account to eighteen percent of the, of the wall being, being windows. So, in my opinion, we're, we're delivering the amount of window space if you will that is consistent with the building exactly to the south, that yellow, that yellow building. The, the windows are sized to have a casement and a large pitched window, so it's no different than what you might see at, at the Crutchfield Building, or, we just felt that it, it didn't warrant having muttons or grills in the window, it, the scale is, is different, and we wanted when you came into that, those one-bedroom apartments and that living space and then the bedroom, the windows to be quite large, and we just allowed these windows to be up high above the bathroom appliances if you will, in those corners.
So you said pitched windows, so they don't open?
Yes, each window has the, so there's a, a five by five, and then a two and a half foot, and it's a, it's an on it, okay?
Quite, question?
Yes.
Looking at that, the yellow building to the south, in scale to that, would come up how far, four stories?
Six.
This, you're looking at eighty feet.
Comes up roughly four and a half stories, so I can go back to the pictures to show you.
Yeah, I mean, I remember the pictures, I was trying to get it from that drawing.
So, so you can see, we're just, we're just above the fourth window, if you will.
Gotcha.
There are four, you can see four bathroom windows here, four bathroom-
Yeah.
-windows, one, two, three, four, so we're just down, it's just a little bit, the yellow building is higher than the red building, so you're about four and a half stories if you will, the new building adjacent to the, to the old. So we talked about window placement and window area, how we got there, the other issue here is their com, their comment about the appropriate use of materials. I'm, I just would argue that, you know, as, as building construction changes and technology changes, we look at ways of, of putting a facade on the building that, that we can do as cost-effectively as, as possible, and I think that the perfect example is what is being done at the Employment Security Building down the street. It's the same product, the difference is that product, it's still a NITCHIHAU product, but it has an aluminum receiver, like a little H-channel where every panel sits in, so when you look at the panels, you actually have a border, a, a web if you will, of aluminum that those panels sit in. This particular NITCHIHAU panel is like a, for lack of a better way of saying, it's like a click floor. It has a, it has a tongue and groove on each panel, so it's a concealed fastener, the fastening is behind, so when you put this together, whether it's a square edge that creates a flush surface, or it has a routed edge that creates sort of a border, or, I'm going to show you here, the product is actually three-quarters of an inch, it's a cementitious material with a, with a epoxy-based finish, it comes in smooth textured and a ribbed product. This rib goes from two to six inches, so you can make it look like horizontal siding, and you can see that when I talk about the panel actually having like an edge, that edge creates sort of a, a pattern, and you can create it both vertically and horizontally. So you've got flush surfaces, these are the colors which don't show up quite well on, on the projector, but it's, it's kind of a muted blue and a, and a dark gray that we've sort of scattered if you will as it goes up. I'm just giving you some examples of, this product is being used everywhere. You can argue, you know, it, maybe it looks commercial or it looks different, but I can tell you that it's going up on Hyatts, it's going up on Marriott's, it's going up on residential structures across, across the country.
And the, and the panels that you're proposing are flat, smooth?
All three, so you're going to have a ribbed, the dark gray on the, on the base is ribbed, so it gives some texture if you will.
Yeah.
And then it goes up and it, and there are a couple of stripes, a couple of indentations where, as the color sort of fades off, those panels go from ribbed to smooth, so some of the, the dark is, is ribbed and some of it is smooth, and then you go to lighter color flat blue. So, you know, we did a whole bunch of studies, and, you know, I'm, I'm not going to criticize what's being built here, but this is gray, white, and black, and it's just flat panel and it's, and, you know, clearly we could do that, this is actually a better picture of it, I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong, just working with the client, we wanted to come up with something that was a little more progressive in some people's minds and had a little more color, and I know that a lot of people that I'm working with, so if you can see, the dark down the bottom here is a ribbed panel, and then it turns into a gray, then some of the panels would be ribbed, so there'd be a sort of texture that goes up, and it transitions to the blue, and then there's another ribbed panel up top, up here. I want to go back if I can, these vertical fins if you see on the building came from a study looking at how close the windows were to the building to the south. So what we were trying to do is, the, the panels come out eighteen inches and they kind of undulate, and the idea was we were trying to break down the view from, in both directions if you will, from one apartment to the other, because in some cases, these windows are ten feet apart. So if you're looking at the window on an angle, you're going to, it's going to block some of your view into the apartment and the adjacent property. Again, just showing you where we go here.
So they, they're not straight panel, those, those, those slices, the colored slices are eighteen inches, you said eighteen inches wide and they, do they-
They kind of do this as they go up.
Like a banner type?
It's kind of, you could say it more like a banner, but it would be, it would be an aluminum extrusion that-
Right.
-is mounted like a sunscreen if you will. The, I believe the last issue that they had was setback to the street, I know that Anne-Marie mentioned, and maybe it's changed, but I, I thought that staff recommendation was that the building needed to be on the front edge of the property line, maybe that's not the case.
Staff doesn't have a recommendation that the, there are some districts that require a setback from the street, this district does not.
Does not, okay, so I'm wrong. So, one of the issues that I believe engineering brought up is the, the requirement to have a ten-foot separation of utilities. So, the thing here is that we're not going to move the overhead lines, the utilities which are essentially on the property line. We chose early in the design based on figuring out how much area we had for the building to move the building back as far as we could on the site to give a little bit of foreground, a little bit of lawn, a little bit of, it's saying, "I'm not a retail business, I'm a, I'm housing," so we wanted to have a little garden, a little green, and a couple of trees. So we did move it back ten feet. I don't know what else to say about that. You can see that green designated area in the front would have soft scape and it would have a couple of trees.
The dogs will thank you.
Yes, so you can see the fins.
Yeah, a little bit better there, okay.
A little bit better here, again in the Google Earth, but this is going back to actually inserting it into, into the building, so the other issue that came up is, in the ordinance, we're not allowed to have more than twenty-five percent of the trees to be the same species. In the revisions of the drawings going back to planning, we actually, there are no requirement for trees because there are no requirement for parking. We want to have two trees in the front, we would like them to both be the same, I don't want to put a maple in a poplar, but the standard says they have to be two different trees. So, again, I plead to your, and we did pick a tree, if you will, that is a European horn that is, will get tall, it could get as high as forty, forty-five feet, but it only has about a ten-foot, it only gets about ten feet wide, so it will never be, it will never have to be pruned back, and it should not be an issue with the utility lines in the front.
Evergreen or?
I'm sorry?
Is it an evergreen or is it a?
It's a deciduous tree.
Deciduous, sorry.
Yep, yep. And then the last issue that was brought up was the off-street loading. I just wanted to point out, State Street on the left, the yellow box in the back is the trash room for the building, we don't have off, any sort of off-street loading, we don't have any sort of place to put a dumpster. The idea here is that CATCH is going to hire a vendor, and the vendor's going to come in and they're going to remove the, the rubbish, you know, in, basically in wheeled carts. I mean, that's going to be part of, and honestly, I think that, that happens in a number of the businesses downtown, so, and that's all that I have, and I'm going to give the floor to Mr. Phil.
Okay. See if they don't get rid of this. Bring it in the second string.
Sorry, back bench, back bench.
It was a shot, it was a shot. It was a shot.
No, I, no, I'm-
Questions, comments?
Oh, come on, I'll ask some questions and comments.
Any levels below grade?
No.
No. Everything's same grade, dump you just addressed, the dump was the other. Central air?
Yes.
Okay, so no AC units hanging out of the units. Those were the only three questions I had. I can't believe nobody else has any other questions.
I had very similar ones, but you asked the ones about the windows and the-
Snow storage, lighting plans, I saw a, a sign on the front, so signing, signage will be separate?
It will be separate.
Okay, so separate application for signage. I, again, I echoed some of the concerns regarding the architectural design review, but I think John did a great, Jonathan did a great job of, of telling us why, and, and the reasons on setbacks for the window coverage, I, I understand that, so.
Ken, one last statement, I just plead to the board here that, your recommendation is staff is to approve projects or move them forward, but possibly send it back to ADR for review, and I, I-
Yeah, I don't think-
... scares the death out of me, because it just licensed that board to actually design by committee, and, and I don't know what to do.
Okay, yeah. I, I don't know that we're at that point, but Counselor Todd?
Thank you.
Have to stop and think now every time I say that.
That's better than I do sometimes.
Yeah.
That's all right. Mr. Toto, very nice to see you here.
Nice to see you.
I have a question that, this, the issue's come up, as we know, there is no parking regulations in this district, but we, we heard some comments related to concerns about, you know, if, if folks actually had vehicles, where would they park? The folks that are going to be utilizing, renting, renting these apartments, is that going to be an issue, do you think, for, for anyone that's going to be living there, or?
Absolutely not. So, there is a city garage four hundred and seventeen feet from the front of this building, so individuals with vehicles will be able to access that city garage, and one of the things that really attracted us to this site is it, it's in the city, right? So they are all one-bedroom units, so we expect it to be single tenants or two, two persons per unit, really anticipate it to be people who work downtown, and, and it's a, it's a walking city now, everybody knows that, it's tremendous, there's public transportation around, so we do not expect parking to be an issue at all. I can tell you that we have twenty-five units of residential apartments in the old Endicott Hotel Building, and we've had that for probably nine or ten years, and we have never had one issue regarding parking or lack thereof, there's zero parking there as well.
Thank you. So on the parking question, I know there's a no parking zone in the front right near the entrance, somebody comes in with groceries or whatever, pulls into the no parking spot, unloads their groceries quick into the lobby and then goes and parks, is that what's anticipated or is there not going to be? I mean, again, I appreciate the, you can't, I appreciate the fact you're probably going to have a lot of people walking, but-
Yeah.
I mean, that's, you know, that's probably going to happen, that's not a bus stop there or anything like that, like in other spots.
Right, yeah, I can't, I can't speak to what they might do with their vehicles.
What they might do.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions from the board? I got to ask, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application?
Before we get to the, the audience, Mr. Chairman, I just to supplement some of Jonathan's testimony, I think Jonathan did a great job addressing the ADR concerns. I'll just note in the staff recommendations, there is a recommendation that you deny architectural design review and condition approval on going back to ADR, and I think Jonathan said we want to avoid that as much as possible. It's not to say we're not willing to entertain ideas on colors and designs and things of that nature, but I think the, the roof forms, the setback issue, the window treatments, and particularly the height are all not really items that are appropriate for further design review, particularly the height, and the zoning ordinance allows this by right, I think it would be inappropriate legally for this board to overrule in effect the zoning, what the zoning ordinance provides, and in fact, the staff supports the height, the zoning board has supported the height implicitly, so we hope that you will not impose that condition and you will grant architectural design review on the basis of Jonathan's presentation.
Good. Counselor Todd?
Thank you. I think that the, I'm trying to, in my mind, determine what, how to describe why it seems that this building kind of, the way it's designed sort of sticks out like a sore thumb, but that's the best way that I can describe it in my professional language that I'm using, you can tell I'm not an architect. But I, I think that if you look at the, the design of the Employment Security Building, we saw some photos of that, I think- and we saw some photos of that, I think that, uh, to me, you're looking at that and you say, yeah, well, obviously that's a modern building. That, that architecture is modern. But there is something about the way it's designed and the shape of it. It's, it's not a flat building. There are some indentations and so forth. And so when you're looking at it to the eye, it's, at least it's something like, you're somewhat interested in it. It kind of captures your eye. Um, I think that the, the issue here to me is that this sort of starts off with the, uh, it kind, it looks like a, kind of a Hulk of a building, basically, is the way I can describe it. It doesn't seem to have any sort of, um, I know you're trying to add textural elements, but with, with those, you know, inserting those panels and so forth that's, that run vertically in the building, but I think that, um, it would be good to somehow find a way to, um, maybe approach this with some expertise and it's not going to be mine. Uh, and maybe it has to do with the colors, but some way to be able to get it to kind of blend in a little bit more with the surrounding, uh, buildings. And, um, I think it already has, uh, working against it, the, the height. The height doesn't bother me that much. I think if we were able to come up with something design-wise, and maybe that's what ADR was trying to do, um, that would kind of have it blend in a little bit more with the surrounding buildings. And that's what I'd, I'd like to try to go for.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you. I think I, when I first looked at it, I thought the same thing and it does, it does stick out. Um, I think it lacks character, it lacks pieces that, that give it character. So it almost looks like it's a government building that was plopped down in there and, and, and added pieces. But that's what the, that's what the client wants. The, the client wants affordable housing. So, you know, there's, there's the character pieces of it may be, um, may be at risk. Some of the pieces that, that, on the, on the window coverage and the amount of window coverage and the setbacks against the building that's next door do drive some of that design as well. So, Amanda?
I, I think, uh, Counselor Todd is, um, we may not be, uh, our, our board may not be able to determine what colors they choose, but I think if you do look at the buildings that are next to it, that they're of a lighter color, except for the brick building that's on the corner that is like the darker brick red. Um, but all in all, I think for the most part, like they were saying, the materials that they've used, it's a, it's a color choice that's really the, on the client too. But if, if I were to say if there was something that could make it blend a little better, it would be some lighter choice, color choices. But again, that's, that's on to the, uh, the owner, the client, the owner that, that can make those decisions. Um, I don't think that we really have a huge purview of, of making those choices.
Make recommendations.
More than make his recommendations, more or less, but, um.
If I, if I could address one, um, just to clarify something, in case I missed, I may have misunderstood. Um, the building, the proposed building that we have does step back at each, on each side. And you'd see that it's very similar to the employment, what I guess we're calling the Employment Security Building that the city was involved in helping develop. Um, it, it steps back very similar. This is not, I, I don't want you to think it's one, one flush square. It's certainly not. The, the four corners do step out where you see houses, the bathroom. So I think that does give it, it gives it a little bit of a, um, a different look with the step backs and those vertical panels, the wavy panels, those do not protrude out past the,
Metal, I believe it is metal, but.
They do not. So it's not like, if you're looking at the plane for that, you're not going to see those panels sticking out. It was, that was a little bit difficult to see in one of the renderings.
Earl? Um, this is more of a comment than a question. I, I agree with everything that's being said. When I first looked at it and went, and when I saw the colored banners, I thought, didn't we just get rid of a building that had colored panels on the front that was the ugliest thing in the world? No, but that was that building, not this one.
The city owned that, I believe.
That's right. Yeah, we did. Well, we, the state owned it. It was a, so. But my point is, when I went through all these changes, it's a worthwhile project. It's, it's really, it's really conquered, becoming urban apartment living, what it's going to bring to downtown. That's, that's another whole issue. We're not here for that, but we're going to see more of this because that's the way it's, that's where we're headed.
Color, design?
Well, color, design and the need.
Yeah.
It really fits the need and I think Catch were coming through.
Somebody mentioned that the, the scale issues with two basically houses next to it on the north side doesn't help that. So if there was a four or five-story building to the left or right, it might be a different, might be a different story. If they were tied up to the street, it, again, different story. So.
But it's not.
It's not.
And we need it.
They need, desperately need twenty-eight single-family, single, single-unit apartments.
I think Earl's also commented that this is, this is where Concord is going and, and many instances that even the, the building too nowhere, I guess you could say, may eventually turn into something else. And it would then be matching that.
Right.
Instead of, you know, so it's.
Yeah. Again, I think the architectural design review piece is, hey, we got questions. We can't approve it till we get the questions answered, so we're going to recommend coming back. Staff reports on that. Staff puts it in your package as a denial based on that, but based on the feedback that we heard tonight and based on the, the explanations of what the, those issues were. And the comments were, were dead on. I mean, they didn't like it. They didn't like the look. They didn't like the feel. And I think they did a good job addressing why those looks and feels are an integral part of making the project work monetarily as well. You can't cut a floor off to keep under a six inches of, of height difference. So, Matt?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, what, echo what Earl said about the necessity, maybe Rich said, about the necessity of this kind of housing. And we are not going to solve our housing problem in Concord or New Hampshire if we don't do more of this and zoning and planning is an impediment to a lot of this. And so we are part of that problem if we don't start allowing a little bit more of this and be a little bit more flexible.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, other questions and comments? I saw no members of the audience, so we will close the public hearing. We'll send you guys back. Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry, Dina.
Sorry. Kind of came to say.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Okay, hang on.
Would there be any type of, um, solar application or any type of sustainable application in this project?
Good question. We have not finalized our plan, but we certainly will be looking at solar.
And potentially putting panels on it.
Don't make them too high.
Yeah, even taller.
Yeah.
Paneling on the roof of many these things.
Likely, yeah, that's, that, if there's going to be solar, it would be on the roof and not visible. But we haven't gotten into that kind of detail of construction elements or anything like that. Do, we are looking at solar on several of our other properties within the city.
Is that then would increase the height of the building too? Um, I think it's a great project, but, um, the height kind of bothers me compared to the other buildings.
Yeah, scale. For now.
Okay. So before we get to the public testimony, I know we had, uh, Jeff Santa Cruz sent in a couple of questions as well. I almost closed things up too quick, so I apologize.
He had a couple of questions. Uh, one, he was wondering about the no parking zone and what its purpose was.
Well, so the existing parking lot, that's the driveway to get in the existing parking lot. So we could add another on-street parking space there. We thought maybe that it'd be an appropriate place for, uh, the chairman mentioned about people dropping their groceries off.
And UPS is going to pull in there. Deliveries are going to pull in there. You need some space out front that's no parking.
Right.
And, and allow, tell the residents, you know, hey, if you need to load or load, loading and unloading for residents only or something like that. You don't want people parking there all day, but if they can, you know, get in and out in ten, fifteen minutes, I don't think it's a problem.
That was the intent.
And again, sign it, you know, appropriately sign it.
Well, and I thought perhaps that it was a loading-unloading area for collection of the, of the waste.
Could be.
That entirely is probably something too, so. That'll look nice right in front of the building. You don't want that.
He just wanted to make sure that, that the lighting plan, in his estimation, did not show the property lines clearly to make sure that there was zero-foot candles at the property lines. Uh, so perhaps just add a condition of approval to toss those property lines on the lighting plan and make sure that it's zero-foot candles.
Sure. You okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
And, uh, last thing that he noticed that I missed, so I apologize for that, and it appears that he's correct. That there are two portions of internal sidewalk that only appear to be four feet wide. Our site plan regulations require flat-out five-foot width. So if you could perhaps request a waiver to that section and I will find it for you right quickly and add that to your request.
Yes, we can do that. We're pressed for a room here, uh, so.
That, that's quick, clear.
Even, even going from four or five-foot sidewalks is, is a bit of a challenge on the sides. We have it out front, obviously, um, but the sides, we went down to four feet.
Yeah, and it's only in, in a few places and, and not very far. So I'll find that section and I'll get it written up into it.
And we'll take some public testimony. So we'll send you guys back.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome the public up for testimony.
Good evening. I'm Steve Dupree. Apologize for being a bit casual. I'm, have no horse in this race, but I care deeply about process. I've been appearing before the planning board for forty-seven years now. I still do keep my legal license and do consulting for some communities on this. My primary concern is it's a mistake for the planning board to approve projects and then send it back to architectural design review. I think some of you remember, I had one project where five members showed up one day and they had comments. We incorporated the comments. We came back and there were four of the five weren't there and there was a new group because we have the large group because they're all volunteers and they took the opposite view and we get ping-ponged. What I use architectural design review, and many of, many of them have worked for me in different capacities on different projects, is to give feedback like you heard here on some of these comments, but then you see the applicant address them and, you know, would I pick the same color fins? No, I'm a big lover of color downtown. I think it's good. It helps offset the, the height of the building. But it's a mistake for this board to pass something and then defer back to an advisory board. So whatever decision you make, I care about the process. I think the planning board should make a decision. Um, I think it's a terrific project. Uh, you know, you saw the study about roofs. Most of the roofs are flat. Joe LaRochelle's optometry office, or formerly Joe Rochelle's next door, is the only one that's really out of sync. Realistically, over the next twenty years, most of those buildings will disappear because we need more urban downtown housing and these buildings do get taller. Uh, the one comment that I really, I, I dug in on a little bit is I like more windows, more light, more windows makes more livability. But when you understand that because of the fire code, you can't get too close to the buildings to the south, that limits you unless you want to put external sprinklers, which are the, or, or the, what I call the hurricane shutters, the ugliest things you could ever have. It all makes sense. So I, I think, again, I have no horse in this race. I don't work for Catch. I'm not a big donor to Catch. I don't do their projects. I care about the process. It's a mistake generally for the planning board to pass something and then give authority to a subsequent board. Most communities don't do that. Concord in the past used to have a history of giving you approval, but you had to go satisfy all these conditions. That's why you see some developers like John Trolley and will show up and go, no, I'd rather delay the approval until all the conditions are met. And it just saves that gray area, particularly with architectural design review, where everybody has a different view, much like we've heard expressed here and some of those comments I support. That's, I just care about process.
And we've seen the process work and we've seen it and we've started to change it. Um, again, it, the, the ADR is a subset of the planning board. We use them to, to kick around these things. They're advisory, then, you know, they, they advise us. They say, we love this or we hate it and here's why. And we can say, okay, well,
you're noted, but we think it's great and this is the way we're going to do it and the bucks comes with us. The other side of it is the signage piece of it, which is really where we need their help.
And, and you've heard, you know, maybe earlier with Glenn Shadlock and Neopco Signs, he's very adamant on what we can do, what we can't do, and he's been very helpful in, in setting us straight on what we've been doing and it, we shouldn't be doing. So, um, your point's well taken and, and it, we are going to try to make decisions here and now and not send them back.
Yeah, I'll just remember, remember when we were doing the Smile and the Boundary Building, the, the ordinance requires the buildings to be at the property line? And I had to come and we had to argue in design review. There were some people on architectural design review said, it's a terrible idea to set those buildings back. And our architect said, no, these buildings are so tall. If you put them on the property line, you're going to look like Elm Street in Manchester, which I think we all wanted to avoid. We set them back. That created the wonderful walkways, the plaza. Everybody goes, it was a brilliant idea. At the time, architectural design review, there were a lot of people on that committee who thought it was the worst decision we could make. And their input was good. It was good to consider it, but this board said, no, we agree and we got permission variances and the board went along with it. So the input you've given them tonight's good. They've done a good job considering ADR, but I really just was here about process. I think it's important for you to take their advice, but not send it back and give a subsidiary advisory board essentially approval over a project.
Perfect. Thank you. Any comments, Mr. Dupree?
Nope.
How's your project coming on Main Street? Good?
You know, here's the ironic thing. We spent two years and I should have done a structural study first because, I'll share this with you. When the demolition contractor moved his yellow bulldozer up, I saw him take the first arm and I thought, oh, he's going to swing it into this thing. That's going to, uh. And he put it up against the building and he was just nudging it a little bit. And I said, I, I was down there that day and I said, why are you doing that? And he said, I'm just seeing how structurally sound it is before I start the demolition. He pushed a little harder and about a third of the building collapsed. And I go, well, that's not good, is it? And he said, no, this, Getty's building movers might have gotten it onto the trailer, but they would have left it on Main Street. And so we, I go, how did I spend two years and all that money if that was the obvious answer? And what it turned out is the building originally built in eighteen fifty-four had four rooms on the first floor. When we went in before demolition, there were twelve doors. How'd it go from four rooms to twelve doors? Well, over the intervening hundred and fifty years, people would come along and subdivide the rooms or add closets and they'd just go in and knock down a wall and put up a header and tie it to the two-by-fours and think it's great. With a three-story building and you're hanging a man-starred roof off the side, it had become structurally unsound. So if I were really a stud developer, I would have done a structural study and realized we couldn't save the building instead of spending two and a half years on it. But old Steve thinks while it was built in eighteen fifty-four, it's still here. It's in good condition. It must be sound as a rock.
Live and learn.
Live and learn. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any other testimony regarding this application? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments from the board or staff?
Just a quick comment from, from, from staff perspective. Going back to the architectural design review piece, I guess first, um, I would say that Catch Neighborhood Housing has been a partner of the City of Concord ever since it was created. And I think the city has supported them by securing community development block grants or other funding sources, uh, for all the projects they think they've ever done in Concord. So that's part one. They, they serve an important mission. They've been a good partner. They have buildings that are downtown right now. It's the Mino Place Building, which is built on the backside of Mr. Dupree's, uh, Smile Building, uh, on Store Street. And they have the Endicott Hotel. I think both make a, uh, are handsome buildings, um, that make a positive contribution to downtown Concord and its architecture. Um, the Mino Place Building went through in two thousand and nine or ten and did go through architectural design review and is probably better for it. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about, uh, the Employment Security Building, which is near and dear to my heart because I have lived that entire project for ten years. Um, I can tell you that that particular project, which does use modern materials, um, went through architectural design review. I want to say there were three meetings with ADR and we ended up with a better product because of it. Um, and I would also point out that that, the, the Employment Security Building also uses masonry because we were trying to do a modern building with some modern materials, but be sympathetic to the historical, um, uh, vocabulary of downtown Concord and, um, but make it clear that we're building a building in two thousand and twenty-four, that we'll also get along well with buildings that were built in eighteen seventy-five. So in this case, you know, ADR had a chance to talk about it. They did not have a chance to meet with the architect because he was not there. Uh, it is the board's prerogative to do whatever you would like to do relative to architectural design review. But, you know, there is a, that process exists to help refine projects, to get something, um, that is as, as high quality as possible, to make sure it has a lasting positive impact in downtown. And, um, I would just leave it at that.
So again, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Matt, for the, for the thoughts. Uh, and I do recognize that architectural design review brings a lot to the table, has a lot of feedback, has a lot of, good feedback on, on a lot of different things and things that I don't think of. But at, at some point, you look at it and say, okay, this is, this is the building, eight stories, next to this, next to this, next to this. Um, at the end of the day, if they're not looking for waivers other than height, and we've got the purview, I guess, to be able to say, we don't like it and we want to change it. Do we, do we send it back to architectural design review? They look at it and say, we want to, we want to change the facia. We want to add a, a dental molding. We want to add some character to the building. Do we, do they have the ability to do that?
So, so just for-
Let me clarify something that I was going to say before you, the, if, a careful read in the staff report shows that it was to deny architectural design review approval with the precedent condition that revise the architectural elevations to address- approval with the precedent condition that revise the architectural elevations to address the concerns of the architectural design review committee, including greater conformity with the architectural design guidelines, and submit the revised architectural elevations for a recommendation from the architectural design review committee and an architectural design review decision from the planning board. So it would not be going back to them to make a decision. It would be going back to them for a recommendation and it would be coming back to you.
So for clarification, the staff report is to approve site plan approval, not approve architectural, have the applicant go back and work with ADR on this very innovative design and then come back to the planning board to get planning, architectural design review approval, because only the planning board can grant that. So that's where the staff is coming in. And we understand that there is a funding deadline that Catch is trying to meet for the next round of low-income housing tax credits and that the site plan approval is critical to that timeframe, but the architectural design review may not be.
Okay. So again, and from a process perspective, if it's approved here tonight for site plan approval with denial of architectural design review, sent back for design review, design review says, we want to change this, 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 applicant says, no, we're not going to change any of that, they're going to come back, present it to us, the same exact plan potentially, and we'll make that decision at that point. What does that gain us from a perspective of...
If the board is satisfied with the design as it is, you can go ahead and approve it tonight. If you think the design needs work and you want more peer review by design review, then deny it and send it back to planning, to the design review committee. At the end of the day, the planning board is the decider. You alone have the authority to grant design review approval, architectural design review approval. So if you're satisfied with it tonight and you don't feel like it needs to go back to ADR, so be it.
And I'll ask that question when we get to that point. I know the applicant's probably just chomping at the bit to say something, so I will let you do that. We'll open the public hearing back up just to let you kind of tell us if you don't want to do that and what the, and again, I don't care about the, I don't care about the funding. I mean, I do, I care about the funding. I don't want the project to be that issue, but, you know, I'm sensitive to the fact that people do get pushed around the process and the fact that ADR didn't approve it for whatever reason is material and we need to look at it.
Our inclinations for all the reasons we stated before, plus what Mr. Dupree added helpfully to us is that you do make the decision tonight and for us not to go back to ADR, not because we don't appreciate their comments, I think their comments are very valuable, but there is a timing element here. Obviously, that's not the sole factor, but that is a concern. If you are inclined to get further guidance from the ADR, I would highly recommend or suggest that you put some guardrails on that process. I would want it clear, if we have to go back to the ADR process, that it's clear that, for example, the height, it's not something that you're asking their advice on, that the roof forms are not something, that you be very specific on what you're looking for guidance from them on.
So let me ask you, the lawyer, not the applicant or the architect, if we give that guidance and we say, we want architectural design review to take a second look at this, get some information, hear what the architect's telling you, hear about the fascia, hear about the ethos that's being put onto the building, and your client says, that's great feedback, but that doesn't work for us and we're not going to change it at all. If, the chance of that happening, I imagine are fairly good, all I'm doing is kicking the can down the road to get feedback from the board where I can ask this board, are you comfortable with the design? If they're not comfortable with the design, it's a moot point, but I don't want to ask that question yet. But if we do send it back, the chances are pretty good that you're going to come back in a month and say, we're not going to change it. This is their thought process.
If it's narrowly...
Gauged.
Gauged. I don't want to suggest that my client's not willing to listen, isn't willing to work with anybody in the city, as has been mentioned here. Catch and the city have had a very productive partnership for a long time and we want to continue that and so we will, but there are constraints on cost, there are constraints on timing. And frankly, again, as we heard here tonight, very apt to go back on things like color and things of that nature and you'll get five different opinions from five different architects.
Absolutely.
Maybe you get ten different opinions from five different architects, like all of us. We all have our own biases and opinions.
So if we did, if we determine that we need to have architectural design weigh in, there was, I believe, three items, if I remember correctly, height, windows and the color ethos and general design of the look and feel of the building. My intent would be, I've heard enough, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm talking just to you, my intent is to ask the question and the fact that I don't particularly want to send it back to ADR regarding the height, I don't particularly want to send it back to ADR regarding the windows and the placement of the windows, although I don't like the look of the windows, I get it and understand why. I would probably offer to send it back for design element changes, for color and just clarification. Again, present it, answer the questions, here's the samples, here's what we do, here's the reason we're doing it. And they say yea or nay, you come back and we go from there. And I don't want to belabor the point, but to Mr. Dupree's point before is the buck stops here, one way or the other. Make sense?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable approach.
No, so, yeah, we, again, we're looking for our approval. We're under a very big time constraint, but, and we are happy to listen to ADR and go over different things with them. As Jonathan has explained, and Chris did, we have a small lot, we have to get twenty-eight units on it, we have to maximize what we can do with the building with the different setbacks for fire code, et cetera. This is the design that works. If you're looking for us to go back to ADR and talk about different colors of the facade, different shades, happy to do that. That's fine. When Jonathan came up with thirty, forty different looks, we went over a bunch of things and we settled in and we said, this is a great look. This is progress. You know, everybody likes, everyone wants progress, but nobody wants change, right? And that's different. And we said, this is a cool-looking building on State Street and it's the future of Concord in our opinion. I think it's very similar to Mr. Flatley's building. The colors are a little bit different, the floor plan, the way it sets back is very similar to that, granted, where we're a few blocks away and up one block. So we really like the look of it because we think it, you mentioned it stands out, right? I don't think it's a, I wouldn't call it a sore thumb. I think it stands out. It's different. It's absolutely different and that's something we were looking for. But if they want it just to be tan, you know, they're going to, you're going to decide, ADR is going to decide if you want it to be tan like everything else, right? We can't do it in brick.
So process and procedural wise, if you did get an approval on the project plan itself, that doesn't stop you from your requirements for funding. You could move forward with the general contractor, you could, everything isn't going to be contingent on the final, final points of the spear, design and color, right?
Yes. If we're going back to them to talk about color and some different ribbons.
Got you.
Don't buy any tiles yet.
Don't. Okay, good.
And just for the record, a project like this with the type of funding that we have, we are a solid year away from construction. So this is not happening tomorrow. We won't be buying any tiles just yet.
Okay. Any other questions before I close it up again? Okay, we're going to close it up. Thank you, guys. We'll send you back.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's talk amongst ourselves. Teresa.
I've been quiet.
Yes, you have been.
I've been very quiet. I happen to like where Matt's coming from because I will say, I do think you have done some terrific projects downtown. And I would say every single one you've done, I've really thought was great. I can't say I think this one's great. And I kind of agree with Counselor that it just, there's something about it to me that needs tweaking and just doesn't really work. I would hope we would approve the site, do a site plan approval and then they could work with ADR and really come up with something.
So let me ask you on that. So you're comfortable with the height?
No.
Okay, so not comfortable with height. You're comfortable with the windows, the look and feel?
No. Let me say, no. Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry to say this, Mr. Holly, but no, I'm not comfortable with it, but I'm not an architect. And I know something's an illusion. So I don't know, for example, if they put a cap or whatever you call it on the top, that that might actually make it look like it fits in better.
Scale it down.
Scale, you know, I don't know if there are things that you can do that the illusion looks like it's not sticking up the above everything else. It doesn't make any difference to me which way you look at it, from north to south or going from west to east. It just doesn't quite feel right. I don't have as much problem with the color. I don't have as much problem with the materials. I don't actually have as much of a problem with the setbacks, but something to me just isn't quite fitting right. I mean, I do think the building you did behind Steve's building, the Smile Building, is great. And that to me was modern, it was different, it was a new face of Concord, but I didn't scream, oh, my God. And I think the Employment Security Building, I actually drive by the other end and say, wow, this, something about it, even though it's modern, it kind of fits with the, what I call the ethos or the character of Concord. I don't want to see us lose some of the great buildings we've got or the feel of those great buildings. So to me, I'd say, let's approve it and ask ADR to do it quickly with them so we don't hold it up, but I think it needs tweaking, I'd say.
Counselor. Thank you. I, well, I think Mr. Fertado knows that I'm a big Catch fan and I absolutely support the project. I also am sympathetic to what we just heard from Rosenberg. I think that from my mind, as I mentioned earlier when I spoke, I think that the height does not necessarily have to be a barrier. The roof, if in fact there was something that could be done to the roof line that would be in line with what you just said, to make it not seem like it is such a big hulking building, just plop down here, you know, when I, and some of it may be, again, as we heard earlier from others in this body, something about colors, of course, might in fact help to that end. When I look at the four panels of photos that are presented here, the one in the upper right, to me, just from design-wise, somehow that looks more straightforward to me and it's more appealing to my eye. If that were maybe, if either the materials, paneling, the color, something were different, that's fine. I think when we get into the other photos where it's a little bit more, somehow, maybe this is just in the photo shopping here or whatever, when they designed these, but it looks like those metal panels are very prominent and kind of distracting in some ways. So maybe ADR will have, you know, with all that, maybe they'll find a way to come up with some suggestions to have it blend in a little bit more with its surroundings. I think that to me is, would be my personal ultimate goal is, and I appreciate what Mr. Walsh said, that sometimes, yeah, sometimes ADR really can hit it on the mark and be able to come up with some great improvements. So that's where I would stand on it.
Thank you. I probably will, if a motion does come forward, I probably will not support sending it back. It's an eighty-foot tall building. It's twenty-eight single bedroom units. I don't know what you're going to do to that building to make it look smaller. I'll just go back and reiterate the need for this. ADR had their shot at it. We've, without the benefit of the architect there for whatever reason, but I'm sure if that conversation was had with ADR, it'd be pretty much, I think would come to an agreement with the way that I'm feeling now, that we need it. I think we're delaying it. I understand how we can approve the project and send it back to them. Maybe there's a way that Catch folks, as Mr. Fertado mentioned, work with them. They haven't bought the tiles yet. We're years away from actually building the building. So, but it does stop with us. And I probably will vote against sending it back to them.
Okay.
To ADR.
Dina.
I'm afraid to speak on this. I'm not sure if what I'm going to say is going to make sense.
Pull up a little bit so they can hear you. I'm sorry.
I guess I feel that I mirror what member Rosenberg has brought forward in that I feel like it's kind of, so I think it was a point five acre.
Point one five acres.
Point one five acre. It just feels like it's a lot squeezed into this small space. And I don't know if any conversation has gone into the building to the left, to the north of it. That happens to be my eye doctor. I'd hate to see that building go, but I don't know if some conversation, again, I'm afraid to make this statement, kind of working with that property to be able to get more space to the north so that you could change the proportion. I don't know. That's just something that's coming to my mind.
Okay.
It's a comment.
They see another hand. David?
Just quickly, I agree with Teresa. It just doesn't quite hit the mark and I can't tell you what that is. You know, it just, it escapes me what I, I'm not seeing that I sort of want to see. But I don't want, I'm also a supporter of Catch and I think the project has all kinds of merit. You know, we've got to, we've got to, you know, see that these kinds of things are not lost.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. I just wanted to point out too, I appreciated your question also, and if I understood it correctly, I just wanted to say this because I'm verifying that this is correct. If we were to send it back for additional comments to ADR, that does not seem to affect their grant writing and, it would not have an effect. So I don't see any harm in sending it back for, you know, limited comments and approvals as we've sort of discussed here tonight. We don't have anything to lose, basically, and they don't either, more importantly.
So my point on the ADR comments is the, ADR said, no, we don't, you know, any other project, they don't approve some things, we override it and approve it based on feedback and testimony that we hear. So the points that ADR made were outlined in the minutes, they were outlined tonight. The applicant had a chance to kind of bring forward why we don't, you know, why we did it this way or why we didn't do it this way. Now, some of that might have been addressed at ADR. It wasn't, so that's why they all boiled up as issues. They may go back and ADR may say, hey, we watched the meeting and, you know, understand this, understand this, and we don't have any issues with these, but they might not. They might say, no, we've had another chance to look at it and we think we should do this, we think you should do this, we think you should do this. You know, expanding the track of land isn't an option. You can't get more space and make six units per floor because you don't have the space to do it. I'm sure there's some dollar-wise that says eight stories is necessary, so, you know, you would have cut it to seven if you had to, if you were to be able to do it, or five if you want. But again, it's eight stories is eight stories. You get the funding to do it. So there's a lot of things that drive that. I just don't see, I don't see the value of anything other than look and feel, colors, textures, to sending it back to ADR. And to the testimony that we heard from the applicant, if we send it back with just, you know, talk to us again, I don't want to do that. I don't want to give an, if we, I'm okay with sending it back if we have to send it back, but I want to send it back with very clear guidelines and guardrails, I think, is the applicant. is the applicant used, to say, "This is what we want you to address." And so, if, if I looked at it and said, "This is what we're gonna do," you know, I would probably move forward and approve it and not send it back, but I, I'm sensitive to that, yes.
Just a couple of comments, thank you. Um, first of all, ADR, we have the minutes, and we read their concerns, and Mr. Hawley addressed those concerns. So, um, so I'm comfortable with Mr. Hawley addressing concerns, so I don't know what the purpose of sending it back to ADR would be, because he's, he's addressed it. Um, and I'm satisfied with what he has done. And I, I actually, I'm gonna be, I guess the one person says, "I think it's kind of a funky building, I like it." So, I don't have a problem with the colors.
Okay, so, unless there's any other comments or questions, I'm gonna make a motion that we grant architectural design review, uh, for the project as presented by the applicant here tonight. Um, so I want to send it back, uh, but do send it back for color, texture, and general appearance questions only, not footprint and, not footprint and height related. And I just want to be structurally right here, so I've made a motion, if there's a second, I'll take it.
Second.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded. Now, let's get into some discussion points. Teresa?
Uh, this has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but it's what we talked, I asked you about at the beginning.
Yeah, feedback.
And, and for Mr. Walsh, this is probably, um, more for him. And I, I almost said it when Mr. Dupree was here. We have determined completeness and had the public hearing. And one of the things that is troubling me about this is, and I know it got noticed, I don't really know how it got noticed, we don't have any abutters, I mean, I do know how it got noticed, but I didn't see it. Um, we, you know, we don't have any abutters here. And what troubles me a little bit is, I remember a couple of years ago, when Mr. Dupree came with the project over there, true, was it true? Was it the truth? Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
And he wanted to do, um, determination of completeness and a public hearing at the same time, and we denied it, because we said that we didn't want it precedent-setting. You remember that? And he came running in here later and said, "Oh, my God," you know, anyway. And now we seem to be doing these, that we're doing the determination of completeness and having the public hearing. So, I think, two things. One is, I'd like, in my mind, oh, that's me, to be a little bit clear about it, but also with this one, because you certainly have a difference of opinion about the building and the whole thing, is it makes me also a little bit uncomfortable, we don't have any of the public here. I mean, except for Mr. Dupree, we didn't have, we didn't have the eye doctor, we didn't have the toy shop, we didn't have the monitor building, we didn't, we just didn't, we haven't had, it, it seems like such a substantial project to me in downtown, that it seems to me peculiar, we don't have anybody saying anything. So, again, I would, I'm happy with approving the site approval, um, and, you know, unfortunately, I'm gonna be knowing the recommendation, because I, I really do think, even with the height, I'm not saying I have a problem with it, but I'd like to hear from the abutters. I mean, I'd really like to, and maybe, you know, and I know Anne Marie Senat, Ms. Tim and Senat, um, they all got noticed, I'm assuming, by paper or something.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to clarify that it was noticed as a public hearing, just like every public hearing.
Right. And how, 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 uh, how much in advance did they get noticed of that?
Uh, it's legally required to be sent out at least ten days prior, and that does not count the day of the hearing or the day of the mailing. It's the same process we use for all of them.
Right.
And that's a physical hard mailer to abutters in a certain radius, and then posting it.
Certified mail.
Right. No, I, and I did know that, thank you, but it just, just seems peculiar to me.
Yep.
And not, I'm not, I'm not questioning whether it went out, just questioning why they're not here.
Matt? Uh, yeah, two quick things. One, I think the height, we're really only talking about the stairwell piece on the top, because everything else is within code, right?
That's correct.
So, for me, that's not an issue, um, and legally, I think, we're really talking about stairwell. The second, second piece is about your motion. If I want to support part of it, but I don't want to send it back for colors, what do I do? Do I, do I vote against your motion? Because I don't want to vote against a motion to approve the architectural design review.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I.
See, I like the colors, but I have, I like some.
I, I like the colors.
Yeah, I do, too.
I like the colors, I just want feedback on those colors. So, they could come in and say, "We want them to be all beige, and the whole building to be beige," and then we make the decision, "No, that's not what we want."
But we can make that decision.
But I just want to, I, I, I think it's, it's, it's an important point to be able to let them give us some feedback, and, and it doesn't hold things up, that's my point. That was, and, and again, we don't, if we, if we don't like their decision, or they don't, the recommendation, we don't take it, but I, I, it can't hurt to get their feedback on it.
So, we don't have to, we don't have to accept anything.
No, 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 it's all advisory.
So, I don't know why you limit it.
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
You won't want to approve architectural design review then, because you've already approved it. If, if you want it to go back then, you need to deny it.
Right.
So that you then make the ultimate decision, which is.
Yes.
Yeah.
The way, the way it's written in the staff report.
So, I gotta take out my, I, I've gotta take out my motion to, to, to approve.
Take out my second.
Okay, all right, so we're back to square one. So, what's the, what's, is there a, is there a general thought prior, and I'll let you make the motion, but I, I mean, I just want to move it along, but I.
I gotta look at the.
Uh, is there a, is there a thought process on what we want ADR to, to comment on, or not?
Can't we do what the staff recommended?
Let's see what ADR needs to come up with.
You can.
Yeah, I mean, you, if I remember, you recommended site plan approval, but deny ADR.
Right.
Can we say to ADR, "We want them to come back by next, next meeting," and.
If you deny ADR, I want to put some guidelines on it, for what reasoning? And that was my point on making the motion that way. Counselor Todd.
Chair, you can certainly, in the, sorry, I keep interrupting.
That's, no, that's what I want. I'll tell you if I don't want you to do it.
In the, in the, so we have, our staff put in the precedent condition to submit revised architectural elevations for recommendation, blah, blah, blah.
Blah, blah, blah.
More, you know, more in keeping, it, greater conformity with the architectural design guidelines. So, we can revise that precedent condition to say, to address the concerns of the Architectural Design Review Committee and the Planning Board concerning colors and windows proportion, or, you know, whatever you want to put in there to that one C, so we can revise that to, to give them direction.
And what would that sound like?
So, but that means we'd approve, approve architectural design review?
No, 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 so you, you, you deny.
ADR.
Yeah, you deny ADR, but you grant major site plan approval with the condition that they revise the elevations to address the concerns of the Architectural Design Review Committee, or you could say, to address the concerns of the Planning Board.
With regard to?
With regard to.
Blank.
Colors and windows, or general character of.
I just hate to send it back.
Um, the feel of the neighborhood, or.
Okay, let's, um, let's do this. Yes?
Question. Have we ever just add, asked or made a strong suggestion to revisit colors and just review with us, but we approved it, and it's just to, just to give us a peace of mind?
So, you're heading down the.
Because I believe that we've done that before Alex, Alec, sorry.
With staff, as opposed to.
With staff.
But staff's not architects, and they're not design people, they're gonna just say.
I'm trying, again, I'm trying to help, but if the concern is, is, is.
We've done it, but we've done it more with engineering and, 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 you know, the typical things that we have problems with. So, I'm gonna just test the waters here, and I'm gonna make a, uh, I'm gonna make a change, I'm gonna make a change to this, just, and we'll do one, and then we'll go back if we have to. Um, so, eight point one, again, I want to make, get on the record as saying that we're using, uh, our findings of fact, and the information that we've got here tonight, uh, the testimony that we took, the information that's in our packet is our findings of fact, um, to, to move forward. So, eight point two is to, recommendation from, from staff is to deny architectural design review. I'm actually gonna make a recommendation to approve architectural design review as, uh, how do I do it? I want to, I want to throw it out there, that I want to approve it with no limitations and not send it back to ADR for any feedback at all.
So, you want to approve it as submitted?
Approve it as submitted.
I want to prove it as submitted.
Yep.
So, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve architectural design review as submitted.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and any other discussion?
Wait, I forgot what you said.
I'm gonna approve it with no, with no additional architectural design review feedback, so not sending it back. We're making the decision that, as it was presented here tonight, we're gonna get approved, we're gonna get approval. Now, you couldn't, in the, in the precedent conditions, we can put some precedent conditions in there that we'd like to get some additional feedback on colors and, and look and feel.
If I could, yes, I'm sorry, that's what I was gonna ask you, that, that.
No, we, we, we can't.
Okay.
The problem.
I got you.
It, it puts the committee.
Yeah, I got you.
And staff in the difficult position of, you've already approved it.
Yeah.
So, then, and that's what Mr. Dupree was referring to.
We can't come back, and that's what they were talking about. Okay, so we don't want to do that. So, I'm gonna, again, I'm gonna hold my recommendation that we approve the plan as, uh, as presented here tonight, with the, all of the, the, basically the entire packet of information, with all the information, all the, all the look, feel, design that was presented. And I think I got a second.
My second, yeah.
Got a second. So, any other discussion?
No, wait a minute, I'm totally confused what your, 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 your motion is. So, you're saying approve the whole thing?
Approve the whole thing, for architectural design. Any other questions? All those in favor? Just a hands. Aye, we got one, two, three.
I think I, I'm, I'm confused.
You're approving the whole plan.
I'm approving the whole plan. Architectural design review.
No, just the architectural, just architectural.
It's not going back.
Okay, so five, two, of those opposed? Three.
Rosenberg, Fox, and Todd opposed.
Extentions? Okay, so architectural design review approved, that moves us on to the next stage in our agenda.
That was easy.
Thank you, board, for.
Again, it, it's a tough situation, and I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna address a couple of things in our, in our other section that I want to talk about. So, okay, so that moves us on to eight point three is to grant the waiver requests below for, uh, from the listed sections of the site plan regulations, and those are outlined in section six oh three two C for the site plan, uh, section eleven oh five, determination of completeness, and section twenty-seven oh four four for biodiversity, and I have not seen, and.
And section twenty-one point zero five two for width.
Sidewalks. Sidewalk widths. So, as directed by the staff, we noticed that there was, actually by Jeff Santa Cruz, that there was a five-foot requirement where only four was presented, so they would like to stick with the four. And again, those are on the internal sidewalks, uh, the interior sidewalks only, not on the external sidewalk on the street.
I'll move eight point three with four conditions.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Yeah, there's a sidewalks.
It's the one foot.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, eight point four, deny the waiver request, whoops. Uh, traffic control, deny the waiver request below, now, they address this traffic control plan as, um.
Unless they bring the CM.
As something that they're gonna be forthcoming, once they get a GC and they get the plan set. Is that still?
So, it essentially, we would want to, if you approve that with the condition that the traffic control plan is submitted prior to the pre-construction meeting.
Prior to the pre-construction meeting, or prior to, oh, yeah, prior to the pre-construction meeting, okay.
Question on that?
Yep.
Submitted and approved, or just submitted?
Submitted and approved.
Okay.
Submitted and approved, do they approve it?
Because we have guidelines in the city for.
Yeah, can, can, we review it for compliance.
So, after reviewing compliance, not approval, right?
Compliance, yeah.
Yes.
Too much detail here. They're gonna get a street encumbrance permit to build this project that will require a traffic control plan. They inherently are gonna have to provide one in order to do that, because there's no roam on site to stage anything.
Yeah.
So, we, we fully anticipate that that will happen, it's normal to provide a traffic control plan that addresses vehicular and pedestrian, and it can happen at the time that they submit a, a street encumbrance permit for the project.
So, do we want to deny the waiver, or approve the waiver condition on providing it to staff at an appropriate time?
If you grant the waiver, they're still gonna have to do it later, so go ahead and grant the waiver, and they'll get, we'll take care of it as part of the, the street encumbrance permit.
Okay, so we'll do that as a separate waiver, we could've done it with the other, but we'll do it as a, as a separate waiver. Um, and again, changing your information in your packet here from eight, on eight point four, from a denial to, uh, approval of the request for site, uh, for.
Waiver.
For traffic control plan.
Yeah.
Uh, right? And that will be provided to staff prior, well, not even prior, that'll be provided to staff. Okay, I don't know if that's good or not, is that good?
So moved.
Yeah, so, it gets me a point. We got a motion, a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, eight point five is to grant the conditional use permit, uh, for article twenty-eight four F three, maximum height of buildings or structures, um, pursuant to article twenty-eight nine four B, conditional use permits, and in accordance with article twenty-eight nine four F, architectural design review, the zoning ordinance to allow for a seven-foot-tall aperture, aperture? Pertinent, a pertinent structure to exceed the eighty-foot height maximum. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that conditional use permit, as so eloquently read into the record?
So moved.
Second.
Mighty. Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I'm not sure why, but I'm voting no.
Okay, we got one oh on the record for that.
Yeah.
Um, grant, uh, eight point five is to grant major site plan approval for the construction of a new eight-story, twenty-eight-unit, multifamily residential building and associated site improvement, subject to the following precedent con, subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions one through ten, subsequent conditions one through ten, and a change to?
You want to strike, uh, one B and one C.
Okay, so for the record, one B and one C will be taken out of there, so we'll have uh, one A, one D, and one E. Would someone like to make a motion to grant major site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nobody no.
No, and that motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much. Thanks for the, thanks for the process, we appreciate it. Okay, uh, moves us on to other business in the agenda tonight. We got a couple of items on our other agenda. First and foremost, maybe some feedback from the audience. Um, we've had a, uh, internal discussion for the couple folks regarding start time of the meeting, moving the start time of our meeting from a seven PM to a six PM start time, and we'll get some feedback from staff, room availability, uh, Concord TV will have to weigh in to make sure that that goes on, but we wanted to present it to the board first, uh, get some feedback from the board on exposure, you know, Jeff, I had the chance to ask Jeff Santa Cruz, um, and he was opposed, just because he doesn't think he'd be able to get here consistently at, at six o'clock timeframe. So, uh, feedback from the board on, on thought process on that proposal.
I, I also struggle, because I, Wednesdays are, I'm a casa, and so Wednesdays are our court, and sometimes we have four-thirty hearings in Larkonia.
Okay.
So, I can't get back. So I can't get back.
Okay.
I would, I would like to start earlier just because we tend to go late.
Yep.
But if we can't, people can't be here, bye.
Okay, start. Any others?
Dupree'd like to start earlier, I'd like to start at noon.
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Okay, so, process-wise...
I wouldn't be able to be here consistently for 6 o'clock.
Okay, so process-wise, what we'll do is we'll have staff float the idea, I want to get some feedback from the city clerk, just because she's an experienced person, that, get some feedback from her on earlier start times to see if there are issues, room availability, Concord TV, I don't think it causes any problems externally, but...
Well, I, I wonder about attendance for public hearings, mentioned from the public on, on whether or not six or seven is a...
Yeah, it's a feedback.
I don't know what the answer is, but we should find a way to ask that question.
Okay.
Other boards meet earlier?
A lot of planning boards, believe it or not, a lot of planning boards around the state meet at 6 o'clock, so...
We've already got three who've got a problem, right?
Uh, yeah, yep.
What's that?
We've got three.
And the other, and the other question, the other question under the other business is a point that Teresa made earlier regarding approval, excuse me, regarding the conditions of finding an application complete, setting the public hearing and opening the public hearing in the same meeting where previously it was a 30-day cycle. So we would have the application determined complete in the, in the July meeting, and then in the, in the August, excuse me, in the, in the July meeting, we'd find it complete, and then they'd come back in the August meeting and present. Traditionally, over, over the years, that was, the application's been put in, staff's got 30 days or so to, to kind of look through everything, make sure that the application is, got time to look through, make sure the application's complete, and then do the public hearing, but now, a lot of that's done on the front end. A lot of that is, is done through the process of, of the meeting processes that, for comprehensive design review and for all the other pieces and parts that take place. So when the, when staff gets the application, engineering still needs to review it, so, so if they get the application, determine it complete, set the public hearing, and there's not enough time in there, it's, it's one thing, and then, and that's a staff determination when they say, look, we're gonna need to do this and this. If it's a lot line adjustment, or if it's a, something that's gonna be noticed the same way another notice would go, I'm okay with it swinging and being not rigidly approved and, and, and done on the 30-day cycle, and some things are contingent on, hey, we've got a problem with people coming into the building and, and trashing our building, and we need to do this, or we've got a, a, you know, a funding issue that needs to be addressed. Some of that's the application, the applicant's problem, and I don't really care about that in some cases, but, again, when it's, when it, when staff looks at it and says, we got everything we need because it's a condo dock, or it's this, or it's this, I don't know that the extra 30 days really buys us anything, so I'm gonna look for some feedback from, from Anne Marie, and then anything else that we want to talk about and figure out if there's a happy medium.
A couple of things. Minor site plans, minor subdivisions, and minor subdivisions which include condo subdivisions and lot line adjustments and amendments...
Don't need that.
...don't require that. So it's a requirement from the site plan regulations, so anyone who does not want to do the two-step process has to request a waiver, just like any regular, any site plan regulation, if the applicant doesn't want to do it, they have the option of requesting a waiver. So when, in the time that I've been here, there've been two of those, and those waivers come in as part of their application, and so we notice it as a public hearing with that waiver request. So the abutters are notified as though it's a public hearing, just like it's a public hearing. And, and, and of course, staff is aware of it from the very beginning, so we review it with that in mind, with, to make sure that all of the elements, all the required elements are there to be able to determine it complete.
So, and you've seen in past meetings where people have been here to give public testimony, and we've been like, this is just a determination of completeness, and you can't talk tonight, you gotta come back next month. So, so I'd forgotten it was a minor site plan and other things that, that revolve, but again, there's, there's instances where a major site plan comes before us for whatever reason, it's triggered for this or triggered for that, and it's just a, a process, you know, it's very simple, it's not building them all out, or building, you know, a major site plan like the building tonight that was here that we did approve on, on the same meeting, and, and, and we did it, again, because of our requirement from the applicant on, on the funding piece, was that self-imposed? I don't know, but that's, that's the process piece that we need to kind of figure out.
So one of Teresa's concerns was the public?
Transparency.
And transparency, and the appearance of transparency, I think, also, because if it appears that we are trying to speed things up, even if it's been properly noticed, then we're running into a PR issue, and I don't think anybody in the city wants to deal with that.
No.
And I don't think it's Chair you want to deal with that.
No.
So I would just be concerned about the appearance of that, and also making sure that, of course, it's properly noticed, which they will do.
Mm-hmm.
Don't have any doubt on that.
Again, I, it's, it's the ones that come up that are the oddballs that we're gonna have the problems with, and if it's a major site plan and the process needs to go through the 30-day window, that's what it has to go through. It's the, it's the oddball ones where there's a one-off request, or it's something different, and I don't have a good solution, I don't know what the solution is. I don't think there's any, there's no, there's no issues with, with the notice and all of that, but I wanted to bring it up and, and make sure it was appropriately addressed.
It's the board's prerogative to, to approve or deny the waiver request.
Right, sure, right.
If we submit the waiver request, we have to, you know, staff has to present it.
Matt?
Yeah, two things. One, A, I appreciate the conversation that you had tonight about the last application, I think that was a positive discussion, even though you're here at 10:30 at night, so I...
Oh, this is early for us.
Secondly, the zoning board of adjustment meets at 6:00 PM at night, your cousins, so, but I think you should probably set your meeting time and date on what works for you folks, because it's hard to find dedicated volunteers that want to serve on this board because it's a lot of work, so I would say do what makes sense for you, and everything else will work. There are some communities that do everything in the same night, so they determine an application complete, they immediately go to public hearing regardless of whether it's a minor or a major application. My point of view would be, I think we need to talk with staff about what the workload would be to be able to pull that off, because we're short-staffed now, and it's, it's busy here in the little city, not so little city, and then, secondly, remember you have a 65-day review clock, so if you start the process on the first night, and it is an application that needs to maybe have discussion at two or three board meetings, it might buy you more quality time during the review process to do that, rather than instantly punting the discussion to really, the second night, where you're already probably 30 days into your, your 65-day clock. So, so I think there's moving pieces there that we, the staff and I probably need to talk about and come back to talk to you about what we think might work, but those are some of the other pieces about, you know, two-step process versus one step. City Council has a two-step process for anything that requires a public hearing, so there's a certain amount of customary practice that this town is used to because of that, but I just figured I'd throw that out there.
And again, I'm sensitive to the, the workload piece of it, and I, I know you're gonna have major site plans come in with a ton of work to be done prior to the, the process kind of ending and, and coming to the public hearing piece, so, yeah, I'd love to get some feedback on it and kind of bring it, circle it around next month for another, other business piece and, and address it from that perspective. Any other thoughts, are you good with that?
I have a question, just a simple question, I don't want to drag it out, but when did the CDP process start? Because it seems like if we've already gone through that initial presentation, we didn't used to do that, did we, 10 years ago? Did we do that?
So the CDP is actually tied to your zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance was approved in November of 2001, and, and the CDP, the comprehensive development plan process is required for any major site plan application that is located in a performance district. So the Central Performance District, Opportunity Corridor, Performance District Gateway, which is the mall, and parts of Manchester Street, so that's, that's where that came from, and I don't know, I'm embarrassed to say after, I'm not sure if we had it prior to that or not, but I know it, it's definitely tied to the 01 ordinance.
It just seems like we hear about it, and then they, we determine complete, then we wait another month, right? So it seems like we're hearing about some of these applications for months and months and months before we actually get down to voting on them, but I know this is not exactly true, but that's what it is.
Specifically with the Steeplegate Mall, it there, it was not determined complete. So it, it went to the board on October 18, 2023.
Right.
There were no motions for anything. It, it was simply a public hearing to receive feedback.
So that wasn't, so that wasn't CDP?
It was CDP. The application was for comprehensive development plan, but it was not determined complete, and there was no action to approve it.
Interesting, okay.
And the application's only good for a year, so, and it was submitted August 17 of 2023.
Sometimes you have applications that come in for a non-binding design review as well, which I think that same night, you had other projects that did that.
That may be more what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you.
We had several of those on the monitor property.
Right.
So, major site plan, you have to do a comprehensive design review, right?
If you're in a performance zoning district.
If you're in a, so 61 Borough Road for Club 55, or whatever it is, is a major site plan that's, didn't come up tonight, but it'll come up next month, so just, some example, that's the only one I can think of, but it's not in a, it's not in a performance district, doesn't have a CDP component, if that came to the, the staff as a, as a completed application, what's the timeframe that they have to present that to you prior to it being on the agenda? Do they have to present it to you 30 days in advance, or could we put some requirements, some guidelines in place that say, if you want to be on the September planning board meeting, by August 16th or 17th or 18th, you have to provide the entire packet of information, staff has 30 days to review it, they come to the September meeting and say, staff's reviewed it, determined it complete, and is set to, to start the clock?
Those are already all in place.
So those are in place. So why do we have the extra 30-day cycle?
So in, in some cases, I, I think it's, it's been, I think, intended to give the